Are we ready to go, David?
We are ready. You can go.
Okay. Welcome everyone to the Northborough Select Board meeting of March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. My name is Mitch Cohen and I chair this wonderful group. And I will call us to order at six thirty eight P M. Apologies for those who are hanging on. We had some technical difficulties with the live stream of the meeting, which hopefully are resolved. Um, we have a couple of members remotely tonight, so I'll read. I didn't read the intro script. Uh, this open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely, both in person and remotely, consistent with chapter two of the Acts of two thousand twenty three relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate either in person or remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to be entirely in person and remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Uh, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative to make sure we can hear you and you can hear us. Laura Zaitz.
Here.
Lisa Maselli.
Here.
And I'll do the same thing for Ann Hirsch and Myteeshan. Here. Julianne Hirsch. Okay. And we also have some staff with us and a lot of wonderful guests. Um, and if you didn't catch, uh, catch it during the intro, we are being recorded. And, um, first item on our agenda is always is public comment. However, I'm going to insert a special exciting announcement. Uh, some of you may have heard that our fire station bids are in. I like to share some good news at the beginning of things. The fire station bids came in on Friday. They have been reviewed by our owners project manager. It's very, very good news for the town of Northborough. Um, the low bidder, uh, is six point five million dollars under construction estimate. Um, I see Susan's eyes dropping right out of your head as they, as they should.
That's good news.
This is very good news. Um, this is the, what, what is legally called the apparent low bid. It's called apparent until the building committee sort of formally reviews the process and, uh, and approves the low bidder. I don't anticipate any trouble with that and that will happen Wednesday evening. Um, the construction estimate was thirty three point four million dollars. Uh, the total project, um, budget that was approved by town meeting was forty four point one. That thirty three point four million just changed to twenty six point nine as a result of this. Um, that will have a, um, a pleasant effect on the, uh, the tax impact relative to what we talked about in town meeting. We can't really say exactly what that'll look like because we haven't done the bonding yet. We don't know the interest rate. It's still too early. And I'm sure Jason would throw something at me if I start to quote numbers, so, um, but there will be more good news about that coming forward. So, um, we plan to break ground sometime in the spring and more information will be coming out after Wednesday night's meeting. And I may repeat this five, ten more times during the meeting. Um, now, first item on our agenda as always is public comment. If there is anyone that wishes to make a comment for an item that's not on the agenda, please come on up to the front. Uh, if it's an item that is on the agenda, I'm happy to recognize anybody during the item. Get out of the agenda for yourself. Listen, take your time.
I'm just around. I just don't stop my timer yet. I just want to say it's been a long time since I've spoken in public at this meeting, I think. Um, I used to zoom in like every year for a very long time. So very excited to be here. Looks nice. Um, new setup since the last time I've been here. Um, I, um, I wrote a very long email. I tried to make it, um, I added headings and everything to make it as clear as possible for everyone about the elections in the schools. Um, we tried switching it to the one school, which I truly appreciate because, um, when we had it in four different locations, it was really tough. Um, at Proctor alone, um, the wonderful volunteer, and I don't want to slam any of our volunteers, but the volunteer that was at Proctor, when I went to vote, was asleep and deaf because I tried, I tried to wake him up. And that was one of the things. And at the same time, there was somebody at Z who was found wandering the halls looking for a bathroom. It was like, things like this all at once. And it got us to have it at one location at Malacca. I'm just going to give everyone a history lesson right now, just a quick one. So we tried out Malacca. It was great. All one location, right? Our old superintendent said we would have professional development days. Seems like a great idea. She retired, right? She retired right after. It was like she said it and then she exited. So when we put the plan in action, um, we, the thing was, we had, um, we had the superintendent works with, as we know, three school districts, three calendars, three teacher unions. So when you're planning, and we just went through it, and there was like literal panic in our school district, especially if you have kids at the high school and somebody had a kid in, um, K through A in South Row, because they almost had two different calendars, which is like, would have been a mess. So we just voted on a bunch of holidays, which is great. Um, Mitch was one of the biggest proponents for this calendar. Um, it's very hard to find those professional development days to put on there. Also, when you're planning the professional development days, do you know who gets to choose the professional development days a lot of the time? Teachers and the teacher unions. And we have very powerful teacher unions, which are great because I love our teachers. I, I have a lawyer by, um, trade, but I became an educational advocate somehow in this, in this town. When I found out I had to pay for kindergarten, I didn't want to, um, basically. Um, and I met many of you through that. Um, so at Malacca, what we learned while we were there as a parent and through Malacca, and I'm doing this for Malacca's eyes because I have utter faith in the staff that you will be able to overcome any problem switching to a new location because you're wonderful and I've worked with you. I'm a member of the Z B A. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Z B A. I've been on community fairs for ten years. I mean, I actually said when I sat down and I saw Jason, I'm like, oh, I forgot to check our mailbox. I don't know if we have any from Jason there. I, I love our staff. However, from the Malacca point of view, I already went through the school calendar, the parking. We can no longer park on that, on basketball courts, which part of the thing was the constant parking of many vehicles on the parking on the basketball courts. They're fixed. They're beautiful. You can't park there anymore. Parking on the lawn, the cars were going up and over the curb. The staff, like one of those staff members hits their car. They're coming here. They're going to come to town hall. That's one of the problems. Um, the cafeteria doors, they cannot be locked. Those students, and mind you, I'm going to give you full disclosure. My student does not attend school on election day. I send an email and I send it straight to Mr. Martino and I say, this is an excused absence because you cannot provide my child a safe environment for learning today. Can't. The cafeteria cannot be locked. And even if those cafeteria doors, if they figured out how to lock it, they have to provide lunch for three grades during that time and the doors are open. Okay? Um, that lunch distribution and possibly the gym, and the gym's right across and that's where they put the kids for lunch. Or they bring them outside, which is still a disaster. Um, they put extra police on duty. If you're putting extra police on duty, you're admitting that it's a dangerous situation. Okay, I have the same.
That wasn't my timer.
Yeah, I was like, well, I was like, I thought that was my ring tone. Um, I'll, I, there was something else that I didn't put on here that are kind of pertaining to the cafeteria doors and everything. If anyone wants to see like a carnival, um, and you want to see like how airheaded middle schoolers are, and I'm just experiencing it with one middle, my first middle schooler, I have three kids. Go at pickup at between two o'clock to two fifteen when the middle schoolers exit and they're on their phones and they, and they'll be on a bike doing this and they're just looking down and they're riding their bikes and like you're going to have voters coming in and voters coming out in the buses. And sometimes a bus comes in late and they're winding through the traffic and it's a mess. It's just a mess and the kids are, and if God forbid it rains, because some of the kids wear goggles, like swimming goggles and they're like, and it's, it's Julianne, I'm going to bring you in my minivan. I'm going to bring you in my minivan. Um, every other day of the year, you have to have a Cory form to get past the office. And that is even, we just did this fabulous, um, obstacle course fundraiser in the fall, our first time ever. We had to make sure all the volunteers were Cory formed. Um, it was, it was fantastic success, but that was, I'm also on that P T O. Um, I'm sure at this point in my speech, you're not surprised, um, but everybody has to be Cory formed. Everybody has to be Cory formed. Like, and on this day, we're like, everyone come and vote. Like the doors are open, come in the building, the kids are here. No Cory form needed.
Susan, could I gently interrupt for a moment?
Yeah.
We have a bunch of things on our agenda before we get to the election location.
Yeah.
If you can, if you're planning to stick around for that, maybe you could come back up and refresh our minds about this. If you can't, please, please finish your, you're, you're driving forward in this item. I don't want to take.
Okay.
So go ahead.
Um, and then, um, the T R Os, and I just know this from friends and everything going through family issues. There are restraining orders in place and there are some touchy family situations that go on there. And I don't know if there is with staff as well. That's not any of what I know. But at that point, anybody can walk in this school and you can't ID voters. You can't. You can't stop anybody from coming in and saying, we're going to vote. And, and that's worrisome to me. Um, and it's a disruption to the day. Um, Greg, um, Superintendent Martino did go on record with a letter asking, please remove them from the school. It's just too much. Alice drills, they just went through the Alice drills and my oldest was like, he asked a lot of questions. His mom's a lawyer and his dad's an auditor. It, it's like, I'm, I gave birth to a questioner, right? And he was like, why, why do we have Alice drills and then we have elections in the schools? Because, you know, where he, I'm getting signatures at every basketball game I go to for, you know, my friends that are running for office. Mike, I don't know, Henry, but you know, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to get to the bottom of it, right? Um, and then Sandy Hook. I met, I just happened to meet this couple and their son was, is a survivor of Sandy Hook. And that, that was, that was terrible. Like he's, they'll go to therapy several times a week. And if you can prevent it, we can, why, I just don't understand why we're asking, why we're allowing the public to come in and having our school open. And I know all the places are there, but that door is open. Um, and in closing, um, we have other places. We've already been through the, having the state come. Um, Andy and I, we had, we've talked for hours on this before when we were trying to get it out of the four schools. Um, it's just, it's very important to me for our students. And, um, and you know, I'm very much, just so everyone knows, I'm very much, I'm not an out of sight, out of my type of person. But, um, if you've had that like worry, I do have a second grader. So I'm going to be at that school for like six more years. So I'm going to be there for a while, but, um, if you have any questions, I'll try to stick around and then listen and then bring me back up. But I, there is a Sandy Hook Promise program and I have been going through the trainings. I've been talking with them, um, you know, it's, it's like becoming a community member, um, because I am in the schools all the time, you know? So it's like, you listen to all these trainings and every shooting we have. And as a country, we're not doing anything. We don't respond. And that's not a question we can answer here, but other countries have responded and everything. But this is one little thing that we can do as a community to try to prevent something, you know? So I could, you, thank you for giving me a little bit longer than three minutes. I know I tried to talk to you.
Thank you, Susie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there is anyone else that wishes to offer public comment at this time, please, uh, feel free to raise your physical or virtual hand. Be happy to recognize you and, uh, during any agenda item, if you have any comments to offer, uh, you can do the same and I'll recognize you sort of after the board has some discussion, but before we take any votes. Not seeing any other public comment. I will declare public comment closed. Uh, we've got a couple of sets of meeting minutes to approve, February twenty seven, twenty twenty five. Someone likes to make a motion or does anyone has an English reference?
I'd like to move the board approve the February twenty seven, twenty twenty five joint economic development meeting minutes as presented. But I do want to talk, I want to make a amendment on one.
Okay. Okay, why don't you go ahead and say that? We'll see if we need to amend. That's October twenty seventh. What's your name?
The amendment, um, it's very small. It just says that in the conclusion that the select board, excuse my eyes are not working much well anymore. So hold on a minute. Uh, the select board members expressed interest in learning more about the pace and considering it for future implementation. And I did raise my hand after because, um, I was also remote and said that I was not interested in, in going forward with it. So I would like the minutes just to either say two of the select people or some of the select people.
I will be saying some select board and replace the with some.
Yes.
That word. All right. Why don't we just call that a technical amendment?
Okay.
Not worry much about the details. All right. Is there a motion? Is a second?
Second.
Okay, motions been made at this second part of the end. Any other discussion?
Um, this meeting, I don't believe I, uh, attended, correct? So I'm going to go ahead and abstain. Don't vote.
Makes sense. Okay, um, all those in favor. Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
I also wasn't there. I'm staying.
Okay, I'm staying. Laura?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor with two extensions. Um, next up we have March tenth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the March tenth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes as presented.
Second. A motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor. Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Meeting minutes are approved. Uh, next up we have consideration and approval of the following license application request. Transportation delivery license. I always am not sure whether I'll have a delivery license. S P Limo LLC three hundred West Main Street Building B, Sergey. Uh, if you want to, uh, to come forward, I think this is your item, correct?
Yes.
Oh, you can sit at the, sit at one of these two spots at the table here. Probably the best. Yeah, you're the one. Thank you for coming forward. If you could just, uh, just state your name and your business and what you're looking to do.
Um, my name is Sergey Hancock. Um, I'm trying to open a business, get the license, transportation business to provide with my family this business and circle the people of my business.
Thank you for joining us. Um, I know the license has been reviewed by staff.
Yes.
Uh, does anyone have any questions or concerns?
It was just one stipulation of one, um, parking. You, you could only have one car at that, are you?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm on the, I'm an owner and.
The only driver.
Yeah, so I have.
Okay.
One vehicle for now.
Okay. Yeah, that was the only stipulation, my building.
Well, you say for now, so if, if the business expands, then we might have to go through zoning and another application or?
Yeah, we would have to look at.
I don't think it's going to be sooner because I have to.
Well, if you.
I'm just hoping I have to get on the road, get my clients, I don't know, two, three, four years.
Yeah.
Who knows?
Okay, just come back if you're going to expand.
Of course.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not doing anything.
We hope you can. That would be great.
Steph, do you suggest we include that stipulation in the motion or if it's, uh, in the documentation?
It's in the documentation. Yep.
So just as presented would, would work. Any other comments or, but Lisa, you've got your hand up.
Yes, yes. Um, I'm reading over again what was here. Um, how long have you been doing transportation business?
I worked, uh, I worked for the, um, for the company more than a year and, um, my family started to grow up. I have four kids. I decided to, um, open my own company. So that's, I'm starting. I bought a vehicle, I registered, I have everything set up. So I'm just starting.
Joining on entrepreneur right now.
Yeah.
Welcome to the entrepreneurial world because it's not easy one, but good luck with that. Um, it's, um, so as you're doing it, you're going to kind of learn as you're, as you're going. You were a driver before as opposed to running the business for somebody?
Yeah, I was driver, yeah, but I, uh, I worked a lot. I know, um, a lot of airports. I, I kind of, um,
Okay.
I don't say I know a lot of this, about this business, but enough to start and keep going.
Okay, and you will have, will you own the vehicles? Will the drivers you have on the vehicles like an Uber or how is your, your building mo, uh, business model?
Uh, I ha, I bought a vehicle. Uh, I registered. It's my own. Uh, I mean, it's for my company. It's registered for my company. It's, I bought it, um, to my company. It's not, um, I'm not using this vehicle for a person, uh, reason.
Personal.
Yeah. It's for the business because I don't want to put, I know this business, you put a lot of mileage and I don't want to put a lot of mileage, um, using for myself, so.
So right now you're one employee.
Yes.
You're the, you're the business.
Owner operator.
Yes, um, well, my wife, she's going to help me with the phone calls, uh, with the setup, um, all the schedule, so she's going to help me.
Do you live in Northborough?
I live in Connecticut, but my wife, so I came here six years ago from Russia. But my wife, she grew up in Worcester and we bought a house in Connecticut because it was a little bit cheaper. We bought there. But, uh, because of all her families in Massachusetts, we, we think of a plan to move to Massachusetts back. Yeah, so that's why I registered for a future register.
We're al, we're always happy when anyone chooses Northborough as a home for their business. As we know, there are many opportunities to, uh, to locate a business, whether it be a one-person business or, or something larger that we might be talking about in a few more minutes. And, uh, so we appreciate you choosing Northborough.
Thank you so much.
Unless anyone has any other questions or comments, I'd love a motion.
Um, just one more question, um, sort of, it's, it's, you know, two meetings in a row. We've kind of had similar, similar requests. Um, so I, I would assume this would also include restrictions on like meetings on the vehicle um, at that premises and things like that that were discussed in our last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and the type of vehicle, is it like a luxury sedan, S U V?
I start with the Lincoln Nubliss. It's, it's a wide range. Pretty good vehicle.
Sure, sure. Okay. Um, yeah, no, I don't have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? Which case is there a motion?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application for a transportation livery license as submitted by S P Limo Service LLC, three hundred West Main Street, Building B.
Second. Second.
Been made and I'll give the second to Julianne. Probably do Zoom delay. I may have heard Julianne first. Um, any other comments or questions? All those in favor. Mike?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck to you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think all.
Yes, yeah.
You're welcome. You have to stay.
You're welcome to stay. It's fun stuff.
I have, I have four kids. My twins, they're two months old.
Oh, wow.
My wife is long home. But thank you so much.
Thanks for joining us, sorry. All right, um, next up we have Project Evolved, discussion regarding economic development proposal. I'll ask our attendees to come up while they're on their way up. Um, I want to comment that this is a public discussion of a confidential business proposal, a confidential economic development project. Um, our documentation just calls it Project Evolved. It's a little bit overt, a code name project at this page. Uh, it will be up to, um, those before us to decide if landage is appropriate for them to make it public. You may look at this and have a guess as to what it might be or what might be right. You might be wrong, but keep to yourself, please. And I encourage everyone to do that because as we've learned, that's important, um, throughout the process to, uh, to, to hold that confidentiality until the company involved is ready to speak publicly. But it's important that we talk about it because some of the economic development processes and incentives that we've been talking to, talking about, which, whether by luck or not, uh, lead to this. Uh, it's going to be, we'll have to bring something to town meeting.
Sure.
So thank you very much. If you could, uh, identify yourself or use code names if you wish, um, and let us know a little bit about.
So thank you for having me. Thanks for the interest. Um, yes, we're not ready to fully disclose until approved, but appreciate the confidentiality. Um, so I'm Pat Delia. I'm here, my colleague Leslie and Dawn. Um, we'll go over just a introduction of the company as a company. Company is not involved, so pardon it's a good one. Um, go a little bit about who we are, talk a little about the project and then it will be for a question. Um, and I think you had the slides up. So on the first slide, this talks a little bit about who we are as a company. So, um, in Northborough, we're an innovation center, um, that represents research and development for large, diverse internationally. We actually have a broad range of business segments that we each run anything from.
Uh, that one. Okay, good. There we go. I got it.
Great, okay. Um, we range from construction products to life sciences. Um, in terms of our global company stats, we've been in existence for more than a hundred years. We have revenue globally over fifty billion and we're very sustainable profile companies who are committed to carbon neutrality by twenty fifty. And it's embedded in terms of who we are and how we work and our products we sell today. Um, so in North America, about fifteen thousand employees in North America, over a hundred and sixteen manufacturing sites across North America supporting our businesses. Um, and we do consider ourselves a really manufacturing. Okay, um, the Innovation Center itself, it's been here in Northborough for about forty years, okay? Uh, we're one of what we call eight global innovation centers. Um, and we're the only global innovation center in North America. And my intention with this project is really to continue the building for our innovation and our research programs at the center in Northborough, um, as the main global center for the U S and Canadian businesses. Um, and we do support research worldwide, even though the majority is supported for North America. We're on twenty-six acres of land in Northborough, um, multiple buildings, about two hundred thousand square feet of lab space, over five buildings. We actually have broke ground for our sixth building, uh, just recently, which is in the Marlboro side. Um, and we host about three hundred and fifty on the R and D side and about four hundred internally who work at the center and covering all of our support staff. I'm excited. Great. So we're, um, we consider ourselves a leading edge company. It's very diverse. We have over twenty-five nationalities represented at the center, very technical oriented staff. So over a hundred with researchers with a PhD. Equally, we have about another third with bachelor's and masters, you know, engineering degrees that run a lot of the equipment and the analytical equipment involves, um, cloud equipment. Gender diversity, about thirty-two percent female, which we feel is, is good for the types of, uh, engineering disciplines we have. We have a good balance in that regards. And we consider a top global employer, uh, employer and a top North American employer for over ten years now. And our population is mainly ninety-five percent located in mass. Um, sixty percent within twenty-five miles of the center and about five percent resides in Northborough itself. Okay, you can see by the payroll numbers there. Um, it's a technical staff, uh, so over forty million on our payroll at the center. Average wage is greater than fifty-five dollars per hour. We have very low turnover. We're very proud of that. Um, we offer what we call a really good employee value proposition to our employees and we're glad they want to stay with us actually and build their careers with our company. Um, in this project itself, we're projecting over sixty plus jobs being created. Um, in this, a few words about how we work. So we do pride ourselves on having open innovation, which means we work with the local community and both, you know, locally in Massachusetts and nationally. This gives a good example of some of the universities we work with in Massachusetts. Um, MIT, Louisville, UMass, Amherst, uh, strong research with W P I Northeastern, for example, Rhode Island Brown in, in RISD. So we're quite broad and, and this is just a snapshot of the university network we have. Um, we do this in order to attract talent from the local environment to come to our center. So we have people who come to universities in Massachusetts. We love them to stay and kind of relocate to, to Northborough to do their research. Um, so we too consider as part of growing talent. And we do a lot with the startup communities, especially locally, um, around Worcester, around Cambridge in terms of driving collaborations with new companies that are emerging in this space. Um, we do give back to the community, so it's something we pride ourselves on as well. We have quite a bit of outreach. This just represents outreach for Northborough itself. Um, we offer employees, uh, eight hours of, of paid volunteer leave, uh, to do what they like in terms of getting back to the community. We host a volunteer day every year. So this summer on August twentieth, we have about a hundred people go out to the local areas across Northborough, Worcester, Marlboro, et cetera, and participate and volunteer their time. And we do quite a bit of donations to local organizations. You can see there what we've done in Northborough, the Food Pantry, Farm and C D Center, et cetera. Over the past five years, we've done over thirty-two thousand in, uh, support to these organizations and that actually. Okay, so that's a little bit about who we are, um, in terms of the project evolved. So we're currently in the design phase. We have an architect on staff and we're working to get to what we call thirty percent schematic design, um, which is part of my next level of approval I need within the company, okay? Um, and that's why it's not fully approved and why we're kind of having it not be fully public at this moment. Um, so it's a full renovation of the first building built on campus. It's a hundred thousand. So it's a full renovation of the first building built on campus, it's a hundred thousand square foot building. We expect the renovation to get around ninety million total. It's an old building, so it has some old mechanical HVAC plumbing, electrical that needs to be fully redone for the size of the building. We want to convert this building to what was kind of considered closed labs and warehouse space to really to new labs that kind of fit the needs for our businesses, more of an open lab concept, okay? We require structural changes, we are doing additions, we're planning to add about ten thousand square feet of additional building space adjacent to this hundred thousand square foot building. And we're considering, we're planning for considerable upgrades and sustainability to kind of meet who we are as a company. So new windows, insulation, cool roof, you know, meet the stretch entry codes, we're looking at solar rate, et cetera. So we're really kind of striving to also increase certifications, right? And you can see it requires security, electrical gas upgrades, a new parking lot to accommodate new, new employees we're bringing to this site. We're planning to essentially relocate, relocate employees from another site in Massachusetts to this site. We close down that other lab facility, and that's part of the, the strategy of this renovation. And we already built, or we're starting to build a twenty thousand square foot building in Marlborough. It's about thirty million permits are built, that'll be, that'll be the sixth building at the campus, which we completed by twenty twenty-six, okay? And the schedule below just shows that we're at thirty percent design. My next approval process is to go to my stakeholders, which is back to leadership in Paris to provide a cost estimate during design, and kind of really talk about the project, which involves not only the estimate of the spend, but also kind of the local community's support for the product as well. And I'll highlight that in the next slide.
One thing to highlight too, Laura's been giving us a lot of help for the crosswalk piece, so we really thank you for your support. You're welcome.
So a little bit about economic data, so we are quite busy, we have about sixty-five hundred visitors per year that come to our center, and it's growing. About a subgroup of those, we estimate about thirty-eight hundred spend at least one night at a hotel in the local area, dining at local restaurants, et cetera. And this is because of the diverse research community we bring to our research center from around the world, actually. And you can see some estimates on the economic impact of that relative to hotel tax, meals, et cetera, okay? Property tax, so current building is about seventeen million in value, so about point two five million in tax, ninety million future value evaluation, it's up to about one point three million taxes, okay? And we've done a little bit of a gross economic contribution, as estimate, you call it. So we're planning to add about sixty-three employees, direct impact about a hundred and thirty-four, indirect one eighty-one, induced impact in the community about two oh four, and then we believe the final output of all this is about one hundred and fifty-six million in impact to local communities, okay?
Okay, thank you for that. Now, is there any questions about that particular slide?
I have a quick math question, so is it ninety million of work that you're planning, or is that the building, they don't have a value?
So I'm the one that did the assessment, not the, the analysis of it. What I did was I took the current assessment of the building, which by the way is a market value, and I multiplied it times the tax rate, which is one point four eight percent. I didn't try to do any sort of discount, I didn't try to be the accessory in this case. I took the ninety million because we know that that's the CapEx spend.
Okay, so that's, that's the spend.
Yeah, that's the spend, and so we just simply multiply it out, thinking that's probably the first year assessed value.
Okay. Any other questions to the board at this point? No, I guess. Okay, oh, Lisa, I see your electronic end up.
Thank you. Just looking at the, the last part of the slide, gross economic contribution. Could you explain a little bit what induced impact is? And then the final output, that's a negative, why show?
That's approximately.
That's a, that's a tilde before the hundred and fifty-six million.
Oh, okay, okay, again, my eyes, so what's induced impact?
Okay, so the way that we look at it is the direct impact is the contractors you hire to work on your space to do all the work that you have to do on the site. The indirect impact is when the contractors go out and buy supplies, and they go out and work with other individuals. The induced impact is now you've got all these people who are out eating lunches out, so now you have more restaurant employees, that's one way to look at it. So the induced is the one that has nothing to do directly with the project itself, but it's a function of the fact that the money is still circulating around in the economy. And the hundred and fifty-six million is simply as a result of, this is a Bureau Economic Analysis RINs two multiplier that's used across the nation. What happens is they take multipliers based on the NEX code, and they say, all right, if your initial investment is ninety, a hundred billion dollars, you can project that the spend of the money in that economy, in that region, is going to be a hundred and fifty-six million dollars. And what happens is a lot of economic development folks will utilize that to help justify the fact that there is more of an economic impact than just the initial sixty-two job of just the initial nine million. That make sense?
Yes, that's fine. Another quite, well, and that final output includes Marlborough as well as Northborough, is that correct?
It's, it's not defined, you don't have a, an area that's tight enough for me to be able to just do it for Northborough, so when you talk about it, you're talking about probably an MSA, you're talking about, you know, an area that's larger, obviously, than Northborough.
Okay, so and, and is that the same thing with the, with all the other, not, not the added employees, because that would be pretty easy, but is it the same with the indirect and induced impacts?
Well, the, the direct impact would be certainly people working on the campus, so that one you can count on being, whether they're gonna live in Northborough, I can't attest to, but what I can tell you is they're working on that campus. The indirect impact depends on whether buying their supplies, whether they're using their tiny stuffs. If, so I don't know how that's going to play out, I don't want, don't know what the profile of the typical general contractor is here in the area. But the induced impact, again, if you look at it just for example, the restaurants, hotels, whatever it happens to be, is obviously going to be biased towards Marlborough if it's hotels, and we're showing you that data above that. If it's restaurants, it can be spread all over.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Lisa. And now, see, any other board members that have questions?
It's easy, one more slide, actually, to kind of close out. Your part's my book of confidentiality piece. Just to kind of let you know my decisions in terms of my process going forward in time, so I'm bringing one of the proposals into available to my stakeholders at the global parent company, really which while request for the funding, the capital funding. These project requests, you need a justification, a detailed budget, drawings, et cetera, projections. For a lab, it's, looks expensive, so we're over a thousand dollars per square foot in terms of the specialized lab space that we're estimating for construction. And we are competing against other capital requests in the company. Mostly the capital requests are have to do with manufacturing sites, as you can see, we're very broad manufacturing, which are revenue generating, which is part of their return. I'm not revenue generation, my, my case is long-term innovation for the long-term health of the company, so it's a little different ROI. And when we look at the kind of justification, we look at several factors, the market dynamics, the ROI, the need that I'm kind of promoting, and then the local and state economic assistance in terms of the support we have for the local environment, and that's part of my CapEx proposal upwards to my current companies, okay? So as a cost, it's a little bit challenging, but I am making that long-term case. So that's why we're here today, just to kind of, you know, show what we're doing, and, you know, talk about the possibilities for incentives on the project.
We are working with the state, with Kevin Currows. We're waiting right now for the new updated EDIP application to be released on April fifteenth. What if he's gonna do that? But, but we will do that, and he's also working with his own training resources, so we're actively engaged with the state.
So we, we all met Kevin at an economic development training, sort of a training session on incentives for economic development that we had a few weeks ago. And actually, the two of you did not meet him, because you could watch that meeting and learn more, but, but the rest of us did. And, and I had the pleasure of sitting with, with the three of you, and Steph, and I, Lori, at your super secret place of business.
The back gate.
Back, yeah, back, back a few weeks before, to, to sort of start this process. And that's actually, that discussion is actually what led into that economic development meeting that we had to talk about tactical incentives, or economic development incentives. And the economic development person from Marlborough that we met at that meeting was also participating there, as well as the mayor of Marlborough. Big and interesting project. Okay. Could you maybe tell us a little bit about some of the things that the board should think about, particularly along the lines of economic incentives that they might be looking for?
Right. Don was nice enough to thank Lori Connors of our planning department. Working collaboratively on grants is very important. There's a lot of funding out there, and especially when communities help local businesses, they'd like to see that, and so if we're willing to help them out in whatever way we can, that way. The tax incentive financing is another option, which we went over at the Economic Development Forum. Whether or not, I know you were interested in putting people temporarily into vacant buildings. So, so yeah, we could look at that. Yeah, however we can help, that's, that's why we're here, and we want to be business-friendly, and, you know, it, it helps both of us, so, so yeah, we're, we're willing to commit, and we're pressing our fingers that this goes well with April.
Would it be possible, and to, to have some indication of what that might look like? The benefit to someone like this is if, if Todd goes back to senior leadership, and I can assure you, every other location does the same sort of thing, when it would be in project investments. But if he has something that says, hey, we've had good discussions, they're supportive of the project, we have a long way to go because of the public process that has to be done to complete the process completely. But there's thinking in this general ballpark of whatever it happens to be.
The types of intentions.
The types of potential, maybe a breadth, because then what can happen is Todd can then take that and say, look, I've got it here, now, it's conditioned upon an approval process, when we all understand how that works, but, but it would be extremely helpful for him as he goes to make that presentation, even though he doesn't have a definitive number, maybe arranging things. That's, that's possible?
Right, we could generate a letter of support from not only the select board, I'm sure you're in agreeance, but even our financial committees in town would much appreciate it.
Right, yeah, I'll have to ask first. And, and thank you again, Lori has been very gracious with her time.
Yeah.
Whatever we can do.
Would that outline the types of incentives you'd be considering as well in that letter?
Absolutely, yep, absolutely.
So Steph, would you be able to prepare that letter for our next meeting?
Sure.
And then the board can, can review and approve that. That would be April seventh, is our next meeting, does that work with your timeline?
Yes, that works.
Great, thank you, yeah, thank you very much.
Let's put that onto the agenda, great, and we'll continue that discussion and we'll get some good news. Does anyone else have any other questions, Julianne?
This might be a really silly question, but do we, do we get to get final approval when we know the big reveal of who you are?
What do you mean by final approval?
Like, whatever, you know, the, the conditions that we would offer, tax incentives, or whatever. I mean, your company sounds fantastic, but, but it's a little awkward to say, oh, yeah, we'll give you X, Y, and Z, not really knowing who you are.
No, we would come back and disclose that once we're ready. I'd like, what I like to do is get through this next internal milestone to make sure that I have full support from my current company on the funding. I think once we're, I'm more confident I'm getting that full support, we can go to that disclosure.
And then we go through the public process to make that application, do the formal, you know?
Oh, and that was another question, will, would any kind of entity like this have to go before planning?
They will, they would be with the building base.
Oh, that will, that would go through, okay.
Yeah, it's like, I agree, it's a process.
Okay, right.
Question about town meeting timing. So if there is a tax incentive financing or TIF approval, we need authority from town meeting before we can sign the TIF. It may be challenging to present that without disclosing a little bit more about you. So our town meeting is April twenty-eighth. We do have a placeholder article, we closed the warrant a couple of weeks ago, but we knew this was coming, so we put something kind of generic and fuzzy on there for, for something like this. It would be, it would be very helpful if we could disclose your company name and, and some of those details at that meeting, because it may be hard for some voters to go ahead and say, yeah, let's, you know, give them a discount on their property taxes, which is essentially what this is, without knowing what you are, knowing, you know, if you have any history with the town that might be positive or negative or anything like that. So I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I should be having your view with my stakeholders, a few things prior to that, actually. So I, I would be asking that question if it was a public disclosure, and I'll, okay. It'll be really when they're ready to say, yes, we're, when we put out publicly, we're gonna put these kind of funds you forth. I just want to make sure they're, you know, okay with that. So I can get to you before the April twentieth meeting.
Okay, great, question. Lisa, oh, sorry, no, I think Lisa's hand was up, she was for her, yeah, Lisa.
Yeah, I, a couple of things, I, I feel confident, I have an idea who you are, and I want to thank you for all your help in business in the past. I'm a little concerned about so much of this kind of not talking about certain things or not revealing who you are, and, and a tax incentive, we don't know an amount. What happens if you go to town meeting and the, and the town chooses not to do that this year? Would that slow you down, would that slow your process down?
Because my, my capital approval process will require to look at the incentives that we're receiving in the total funds that are required for the project. So if there is a estimate, and we're not even get that estimate, I have to go back to get approval to get that money. So it's, it does impact my process.
It does.
We will need to disclose who we are and, and make sure we kind of talk about the numbers and make sure that kind of goes in your approval process, and I can bring that back to confirm my side.
And is there needed to be a series of meetings to sit down with folks either one-on-one or, or, you know, however it seems appropriate to help them understand the project and why participation is important, or if you have a meeting?
It's like a public session.
Yeah, yeah, if we get, we get to that point, we'd be happy to do so.
And so, just so I understand, and whoever's watching would, this is going to happen before town meeting this year, or after, or the next town meeting?
So this is on the warrant for this town meeting?
This town meeting, and so, and on the warrant, are we requesting a tax incentive amount from the residents?
I think, Steph, the way you worded it at this point is it's just to authorize the select board to enter into a tax incentive financing.
Oh, but not let them know how much the incentive might be?
Yeah, and I will agree of what I'll, I'll mind read your concern to be that it's hard to. At this stage, it would be ideal if we had more details, the timing is working out that we don't, we, we haven't talked about it.
Okay, because right now, it's stipulated for White Cliffs and for West Main.
Oh, we don't, we don't even?
So there's not a generic, maybe we could change the language?
I think we, I believe you need to specify the location, I thought we had a placeholder for another one.
Well, that's, that is probably why, because you do need to specify the location.
Okay, do a latitude and longitude.
All right, so we will need to, maybe, maybe talk to council about the best way of doing that, and we would have to, at our next meeting is when we are executing the town meeting warrant. So we will need to, if, if the board is supportive, we will need to open the warrant, add the item, close the warrant.
So it's doable.
So it's, yeah, that's doable.
So I have just two more questions then. So we're gonna, we're working toward this year for this tax incentive, and now you're saying that there'll be three tax incentives that you want to offer for, for this town meeting, including this? You're saying White Cliffs, and you're saying for West?
For three separate properties. Now, a tax incentive financing is negotiable, so it depends what arrangement is made with each site. It could all be different.
Well, I would think, I mean, White Cliffs is supposed to be a lease, right? Not a sale.
No, we have the RFP out for both.
Okay, all right, we can talk about that next.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Lisa, Mike?
Yeah, understanding obviously the need for, for a certain level of discretion at this point. I was just wondering, I would assume in, in your planning that there is some idea of what the incentives and dollar amounts would be from the town? Not to discuss those now, but has that been communicated to us yet, or we're not yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
We understood that there needed an opportunity for some internal discussion and education before we sat down and began to talk about what it might look like.
Okay, fair enough.
We wanted to make sure that we did this appropriately.
Sure. Thank you. If everyone's all right taking a break from the questions, I suspect we have a question from the audience.
Thank you very much. Fran Bachter, 7060 Hill Road. As a confirmed taxpayer, I would like to just say, 40 years they've been here. Unless the police chief knows of them and they are a problem neighbor. I think that anything we can do to help them expand their business, which will increase revenue into our town, even if it's indirect through support of things that already exist. And then eventually with a TIF in a incremental tax benefit is something we all should be nodding our head yes with and hopefully do it and hopefully make it happen as fast as possible. Separate from the two warrant articles that are already on there that are a little bit more gray. This to me sounds like a solid reason for us to say absolutely yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Any other comments or questions? Did any of you have anything you wanted to add before we close out this item?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining.
Thank you.
We, just like the prior business owner, we appreciate all businesses in North Row, both the one person and the somewhat larger than that such as yours. And appreciate you joining us. And Laura, if you were, you're gonna end up.
Sorry, sorry about that. I love the idea. So is there going to be any other zone? Actually, I don't know if zoning is the right word, but are there going to be, I think you touched on the permits. So is there anything else that's gonna, does it need a lot more for this to fit with our existing zoning for where this proposed site is? And I'm sorry, I, it's, it's tricky because I've never had a confidential application like this. I love the idea. I'm just trying to understand if there's any, if there's any, I don't know what the right word is, but anything else that we should be aware of that's kind of a downside for this?
No, 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 no. There, there would not be anything that's out of the ordinary. That we typically, the same town processes that we go through and same department. So, yeah.
So, so our process goes, happens before any, before you even finalize the design documents and start looking for contractors and things like that. Then once it gets to that stage, you're just doing the normal process. So, you know, if there are any variances or special permits from the zoning board, you would go to them. If for site plan review, you go to the planning board.
Agreed.
Uh, if you need to go to conservation, you go to conservation. None, none of this excludes or changes any of that. You'd have to follow all regular town rules.
Yep, agreed. And you know what? If you need a ride to the airport, we know where you are.
And then the only other, I think you mentioned that you'd be open to meeting with us. I appreciate, did I hear that correctly?
Sorry, what's that?
Sorry about that. No, did you say that you'd be open to meeting us if we've got additional questions? Can we meet with you separately or what is the process there?
We have to accommodate that. Let us know what works for you and then we'll work to accommodate.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'd love that. I really enjoyed the presentation and I'm looking forward to learning more.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks Steph. We have a town clerk discussing regarding the future election polling locations. Andy, come on up. David, are we okay with all the technology?
Yeah, I think Chase has taken care of it.
Okay.
She's not sharing that one with you.
Yeah. Chief Griffin, do you want to join us for this turn?
There.
While you're there, could you switch the, or just send it over to attendees on the right? That way I can see if anyone raises. Thank you very much. All right. Chief Griffin, vote him. So as we all know, we've had a number of discussions over probably the last three years, maybe longer than that, about the election polling locations. Susie gave a great summary of the history of that. We know it's all, it's all at Melikan right now. About a year and a half ago, if I remember right, we got a letter from the school committee asking us to take a serious look at moving the location somewhere else. Not that I want to speak on their behalf, but I remember some of the details of their discussion. There were some questions about safety. There were also questions about scheduling that North Row and South Row and Elgonquin try to adhere to the same school calendar when they find it necessary to close school in one, one of those nine schools. All nine have to close in order to keep everything synchronized, which I, I appreciate is a, is a challenge unto itself. And when the school committee feels it necessary to close Melikan due to an election taking place, that means that that impacts all the schools in both towns. So I think that's why we were asked to, to take a serious look at that. When we last talked about that, which was a little over a year, about a year and a half ago, it was just probably in the fall of 2023. We had said that, well, we know 2024 is a busy year for elections.
It was.
Yep, it certainly, it absolutely was. And we know that the school calendar had already been developed and we know at least one of those days, the presidential election day was already planned as a no school day. There may have been another one in there. I don't remember if the state primary last spring was a school day or not.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was. Okay, great.
But we have local elections every May. We occasionally will have a state primary in September. And who knows what else comes along the way in addition to the, the every two years November statewide election. So Andy, you did some, some thought, thinking about this. Want to tell us what you did?
I know we already talked about the, the history, but I think it's also important to have that, you know, I identify early on in my time when I began work almost 21 years ago, that we had issues with the polling locations. You know, legitimate safety issues and also the fact that they were spread across town. It wasn't always easy for people to locate where they go. And that's important for our voters, for our residents. So I spent a lot of time, I think I remember going back to 2007, working with the superintendent, knowing they control the largest buildings in our community that are typically used voting. And that's the same all across the state. It's most common location for voting precincts are schools by far. We looked at the possibility of moving to Elgonquin. It was determined that campus is just too large and too busy in general. There's lots of other factors there. So as was stated earlier, you know, we identified Melikan as the site and we had agreement on that back in 2019 from, you know, everyone, the administration here, the board, the school committee, the superintendent. And the residents seemed very satisfied. So we were able to consolidate the four precincts into one location beginning in May of 2019. We successfully had all of our elections there since. It's been a very successful location. The residents like it. I feel personally that it's a great safe location, whether school is in session or out. It's always my preference to have, you know, school on that day. I understand the challenges the superintendent has with the, with the school calendar. But Melikanville School does provide a very centralized point for residents and voters to go. It has plentiful parking. It's a very controlled environment. We're very fortunate in the, the space that we utilize there in cafeteria. It's a direct entrance and exit to the parking. Voters do not have to go through the school whatsoever. They're just simply going to the cafeteria voting. As you know, the, the police department does a phenomenal job of keeping everything safe and organized on that day, both inside the polling place and out. And they've done a tremendous job and I think they've improved, in fact, in the past couple of years, especially with the traffic management, which is typically our biggest challenge when during the school drop off and pickup times. You know, and that has been mitigated by some of their enhanced efforts. So as far as looking at other potential locations, I know we've touched on this before. Of the town buildings currently available, the senior center is probably only the like, the only likely location where we could possibly hold elections. The building itself, I think, would accommodate all four precincts. That's pretty clear. It's large enough. The parking would be challenging, especially in the busy November elections. And there's also the possibility that you have a very busy election for another reason throughout the year, whether it be a special state election or, you know, the March presidential primary can sometimes be a, a high turnout. So that site would be challenging in respect to the parking that's available. And also just the general entrance and egress there where it is kind of a confined pathway for folks getting in. I think that could get pretty congested. Those would be my concerns of those sites. You know, other things, thinking outside the box that some communities have looked at as private facilities. In North Row, there would probably mostly be church halls and things like that. And so it was a possibility that the town would enter into an agreement to rent such space. But that being said, obviously there'd be some cost with that. And also more importantly, the state has to inspect any polling location to ensure it's fully ADA compliant. You may recall when we moved to Melikan that we did have to initially have some rented ramps to provide proper access. And eventually through the cooperation of the school and the town public works folks, we installed permanent ramps. They have to make it accessible for voters. So those would be our options. The other things to keep in mind is I would hope that we would never consider separating the precincts into individual sites again. I just think that's a bad model to follow. There are costs involved when we move on voting precincts in general. If we were to move all four voting precincts, we have to notify all registered voter households by mail. Cost of that is about $4,000. And it's important also to know that every time we move it, say if we did any type of back and forth situation, which I would not advise, we have to send that same notice and consistency for voters would be lost. And it's very important that we have a place that people know this is where I vote. That's happened at Melikan. It's worked well. I personally wouldn't recommend we change it, but I want the board to have that information to consider as you look at. Cause ultimately it is the board of selectmen and votes to designate the polling place. I ran a few statistics regarding numbers. You know, there have been changes obviously in the method of voting and that impacts our in-person voting on election day. For example, last fall, 9,240 people in North Row voted. Of 4,262 of those voted on election day in person. That's still a really big number. When you look at the senior center, for example, we still have almost 4,300 people coming in and out during that day. So a little less than half of the total voted in person as opposed to either voting early in person or voted by mail. The numbers are much different when it comes to local elections. Typically, the vast majority of folks do choose to vote on election day. Part of that is because the state mills postcards on state election years, which will happen again next year. And last year, our local election was impacted by that because the postcard enabled you to request a mail ballot for that as well. So that kind of skewed the numbers a bit. We do also see some high numbers. As I mentioned, even the March primary last year, we had almost 2,000 people vote in person on election day for the presidential primary. Although there wasn't a school that day. So it's just some, some information for the board to consider. I'm certainly happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Okay. I do recognize that the school committee chair has her hand up. I'll want to recognize her in a couple of minutes and see if the board has questions and see if we can get some input. Brian, and then I'll recognize Kelly.
Question. Thanks, Andy. Thank you, Brian. The, the difference in the parking between the senior center and Melikan, do you have an idea roughly the number of parking spot differences?
It's about a little over 200 at Melikan. Is that correct? It's not quite. It's, I want to say it's like 155 and to 115 at the senior center. If that's what we're comparing them to. I believe those have been out with.
Yes.
But, but teachers will be parking in some of the 100.
They park in the, on the grass area at the front. We used to park in the basketball court, but we don't do that anymore. So we're parking on a grass strip, which is off of Lincoln Street. That's where they parked at the last election.
Right. And that does add some capacity at that location.
Is there a grass area at the senior center?
Uh, no, there's not.
There's a detention pod. So wait, 115 to 1?
I, I have the number written down. I think it's, I want to say it's 154 at Melikan versus 115 at the senior center. Senior center had five handicap spots. They don't have the number for Melikan. There are vote, I believe there are three or four permanently marked. And we typically add additional temporary handicap spots at the school on election day.
Andy, you had also mentioned you would not recommend going back to like the work voting location per, per district. Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, first of all, you know, we had some real challenging safety issues there. I mean, a lot of the schools, the voters had to go through the main front door and traverse hallways. And then, you know, I always said as a parent, I could always relate to the folks that, you know, raised concerns to me. It was not a safe situation. It was difficult for the folks on the public safety side to manage. There's one exception to that, Lincoln Street with the new Adren. They really do have a lock off in the back for their gym where we held voting. So that was a pretty good situation. Disease a little bit similar to that, but not quite as good. The other two schools are not, not set up well to allow voter access without going through school board or such. It's not something I think we recommend doing.
Okay. And then cost difference, I would just assume running a, an election in one location is generally cheaper than running it in four?
There's some class savings primarily from the police department side. You know, we have to have at least one officer on duty all day on election day regardless inside polling place. Obviously we had at least four in that situation at the four schools. Now we could technically have one. So when there's no school in session, we don't have as many traffic issues. You know, I always leave it up to the chief to decide, you know, but he may reduce that down to two or three depending or something, you know, during peak hours have another person available. So it does, it does save us some costs.
Okay. Do you, you don't have like a rough number on that off the top of your head or?
Not right offhand.
No, okay, fair enough. And then one last question. Are polling volunteers and, and the, and the folks, God bless them, who, who help and, who help run the, the voting in our democracy, are they core checked? Like others who would have to enter the school and be there for long periods of time or other town volunteers or school staff?
Yeah, they're not currently and that does come up frequently, not just in this community, but in others. We have had some discussion about making that happen. My understanding is the basic reason it's not required is because they don't have any contact with students.
Okay.
I mean, the more time they're leaving that confined cafeteria space is utilized a restroom and that specifically define which one and where. And usually the police officers at that door where they're exiting, it's a pretty safe environment. I know nothing's perfect, but that building does really suit us well for a polling site. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Uh, Laura, put your hand up.
Thank you. So I, I appreciate all the thought you've put into this, Andy, but I really feel like we need to figure out an alternative. And if that's one location being the senior center or a couple and spreading it out, I would be open to that. But it's just so nerve wracking as a parent when elections are taking place. And I just, I appreciate all you're doing, but I really think we need to take a hard look at how we can make it work at a new location. So thank you.
Laura, Lisa, do you have your hand up? We have a, there's like a banner that I think is covering an orange line.
Okay, next time I'll just do that. All right. Yes, I do. A couple of questions. First off, I, I totally agree with Laura. I, I mean, I think for a parent, it's a, it's a, there's just too many things that have been happening in the world and I, I think they're going to continue to happen. And I think we really do need to start listening to the residents and parents and trying to look for an alternative as opposed to why, why we can't do it. The senior center did a lot of COVID shots and things. How many, what was the capacity at that point of having people come in on a regular basis? It was because it was spread out that it wasn't a problem or can you give me a little bit more information on that?
I don't have any statistics on that. If I achieve May, I did help with some of those efforts. I think it was pretty spread out. We didn't have a very high volume of people there one particular time. We voted there during COVID. And again, it was pretty low volume and, and spread out. So it was really a different, different situation.
Lisa, I think the main concerns at the senior center are the parking and, you know, traffic going in and out. I think space wise, we could do it, but it's just the flow of traffic in the parking amount.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, we might be able to do some sort of a. Well, I mean, we might be able to do some sort of a shuttle or something. But I I do think we have to start looking for some alternatives.
I'd like to bring in Kelly Gannett, Chair of the School Committee. And I realize that I can press two buttons to get that happen. Kelly, I'm going to approach you to a panelist. You're welcome to turn on your camera if you'd like, or you don't have to.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Kelly Gannett. And I am the Chair of the Northborough School Committee. I am also a parent of two students at Mellican. And obviously, I'm a resident of Northborough. So having the elections, it really in the schools, it affects me in multiple ways, not just, you know, as as one of my roles. It's many of my hats. So I appreciate Lisa and Laura's support of removing them from the schools. I just want to give you some statistics and some little numbers. I appreciate the difference of the cars, how was mentioned, the parking spots. It's one fifty-five to one fifteen. And you're saying you're parking on the grass. We have any, any given day between seventy-five and a hundred faculty and staff members in building. So those cars are accounted and they have to be there, whether it be the grass or in a parking spot. Those are accounted for. Those have to be accounted for. Also, we have five hundred and fifty students. So when the elections are in a school, they're even though they're closed off in that one cafeteria, it's still affecting all of those students. The cafeteria is being used, so they have to then relocate lunches. Lunches will be in classrooms, lunches will be in the gyms. So then that affects the gym classes. They have to be moved. So there is a lot of impact, even though it is just one building of our ten buildings in our district. It's still very impactful for that day of disruption. And we do have a hundred and eighty days of that the kids, this is their building, this is the students' building. And they shouldn't have to be moved or shifted or sacrificed because it's a convenient location for the town to have. I really, I don't know your voting number turnouts for the four thousand or the two thousand for the day. But I'd be curious to know if there's more than two hundred people at any given time or a hundred and fifty people at a given time. And because it seems like the parking is your main concern. So that would just be my question to be considerate of. And unless there's any questions for me, I think that's all I wanted to say.
Support of the School Committee Chair. I have, I have one and it's okay if you don't have the answer to it because it involves Southborough. Right now, the regular school calendar on state election years, as I think always had no school at the November election. If we had the, if there was school that day, if there could be school that day at Mellican by having the election held somewhere else, do you know if Southborough would be able to do the same and have school or?
Yes, Southborough doesn't, Southborough is not concerned with having the elections the way they are in Trotter. So they're not as concerned having it. I think, as mentioned, they're more isolated, their gym, their areas. So it doesn't seem to be as impactful to the residents of Southborough. I mean, they are a smaller town than us by a few numbers, but but they they don't seem to be impactful. So they wouldn't I don't think if we were, I don't think it would be an opposition for us for that.
So, yeah, I think one of the things that might be worth confirming if we were to make a switch is for presidential election years or, you know, any of the November state elections that are the big turnout elections would be for future years, would the school departments be able to have school? And so that's a, you know.
We could if it's not a federal. I I think part of it is I I think it's almost like all, even if towns don't have it in their schools, I think schools are typically closed on presidential elections. I don't know the historic reason of that, but that is something that I know has been closed.
I know there are a couple of people interested in in commenting here. I want to see, does anyone else have any questions for Kelly? Kelly, you're welcome to to stick around for the duration of the conversation if you would like. We have a member of the audience that wishes to to comment.
Yes, my name is Susan Saratore and I live at four six five Green Street. I wanted to speak in regard to making a change. When you make a change, you really need to bring all the stakeholders in. So I have not heard at this point in time that anybody has had a discussion with the Senior Center and how the seniors feel about it. And so I think that's part of the process that has to happen at this point. So we could get buy-in and cooperation. My kids were in school at the time of Columbine. And I can tell you, I was dang scared when they went to school after that happened. And we now see how many school shootings on a yearly basis in this country. I don't blame the parents for being afraid and scared. If the issue is that the square footage is the same practically in each one of the buildings, keeping it centralized, either at the Senior Center or at the middle school, and the parking is really the issue. I think one of the things we could ask these school moms, they're very well organized, is Suzie, get a campaign to have everybody vote early and not go to the, to the polling.
Yeah, but the kids are still there.
No, I'm talking about if we move to the Senior Center and we tried to, you know, have fewer cars up there.
Yeah.
I think the other thing that everybody needs to understand is that the school department, the school committee just voted in a new calendar. So there, they have more holidays. And we spend a lot of money on education in this town. And I think having more days disrupted, like if kids are not in school, it's not great for the learning process. So if we could get the voting outside of the schools so they can have more consecutive days in the classroom, I think it'd be a very positive thing. But I don't see this working and moving forward well unless you bring the Senior Center into this discussion.
Thanks, Susan.
Speaking of which.
We happen to have with us.
There you go. So that's why Susan. So Fran Baxter in seventy-six Cedar Hill Road, an election poll volunteer worker. A mother of two graduates of the school system. The Chair of the Council on Aging and a member as well. We did have the discussion amongst ourselves when it was brought up by our former Senior Center Director. It is, we did not think it was a good idea to move it to the Senior Center. Primarily, as Susan said, it has to do with the conversation and the change and the fear of change. I will say though that there are forty-four hundred of us in the town of Northborough, which is a little more than enough kids. And that shutting it down for a day is significant. Not just a day, every day that there is a, an election. I would ask after hearing a lot of conversation this evening, if we could change change our town elections to a Saturday, then that would be one less at Mellican Middle School. If it decided, if you decided that it would stay at at no school, that would eliminate at least one. But I do think that we'd have to look at this space so that potentially all programming would not have to stop. Tuesdays are our late day. They are our busiest days. We have over a hundred people come in and out of there looking for services, supports, socialization, meals. And to ask them to give that up one day this year and then next year it'll be five days. We have on a, over two years. We would want to be part of that discussion and what that means. So the record, our office stores don't lock either. There is no gate to put up between the public and the the staff area. So a lot of things would have to be looked at as well. And again, the parking and the fact that there's only one egress in and out. And someone will decide to park along that park, that driveway and block any type of potential need to get in or out. So a lot of discussion has to happen as to how it would work if it was moved. But as a worker, don't spread it out. There's nothing worse than at five oh eight, somebody says, oh, I'm that precinct two, and I say, just go two rows back as opposed to driving across town. So leave it in one place, but let us be part of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. I I will say that I was hoping that when we had this discussion, we would have all the information that we would have, that we needed to have to make an actual decision. In other words, you know, where, if if it was not in the schools, where would it be? And how would, how, you know, all of the details, all the pros and cons laid out and everything else. Stephanie was not here when we had this discussion last time. So I
I actually think this was helpful.
Yeah, no, I think this is, this is helpful. I I agree with the concerns that were mentioned earlier by, particularly by Susan, that we don't have, we don't have formal input yet from the Senior Center. We don't know, we we can guess as to the impact on them. We have some information upon the, the challenges of parking and travel up there. I I am a little worried with the one driveway, one windy driveway, getting into the Senior Center with all the people that would go in there on an election day. I see how busy election days are. I'm frequently able to sign out in front of Mellican those days. And it's pretty busy. And then you, certainly you add in drop off and pickup time, it gets pretty darn crazy. So I, I don't think that we have enough information to say the election will be X unless unless this maybe felt like Mellican would, that it should stay at Mellican. But I think we probably need to get some more information quickly to make some decisions. Suzie? Oh, I'm sorry. I saw Lisa's hand up. Four members go first, personal.
Sorry, Suzie. Just two questions. Number one, the Senior Center is a municipal building, right? Like it's one of our municipal buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And if in fact we did it on a Saturday like Fran had recommended, it wouldn't have been open for seniors, is that correct?
I was referring to the school having it at Mellican on Saturday.
Yeah, Fran said that she was referring to Mellican. Neither building is open on Saturdays, neither Mellican, Senior Center. And that would mean one, one election a year, it wouldn't impact any of the state elections.
Okay. Because I mean, I think we we do have to have a greater discussion, but I think we have to look at the, at the buildings that we own and how we can make, make everything we own work for the residents. And I, you know, I I'm glad that we're looking into something as opposed to just saying, wow. You know, this is, this, what we're doing now is the best we have to offer. So I'm thanking you for doing that.
Thanks, Lisa.
One more question. When, like, how much lead time do we need? Like, when would we have to make a decision if we wanted to move?
If we wanted to move for this May's election, I suspect our next meeting is when we execute the warrant. And that might be even a little, a little time.
Yeah, we also have to do that mailing to residents. I believe it's a twenty day notice that we have to give. Obviously, we're still within that timeframe. But the warrant itself does set the location of the election. So, and that's going to be executed on April seventh.
And to like an earlier point you made, Andy, you don't want to bounce locations around the different network. Yeah, I mean, depending on the type of election, because you want to have some continuity. So if you're going to make a change, it's not, oh, we can road test this and then maybe go back. It's like, it's going to be that way for a while.
Exactly.
There's, there's, yeah, there's impact to, right, to testing.
Yeah, that was one reason why, you know, respectful to the people that have other opinions. I emphasize the efforts we put into going to Mellican. We did have buy-in. It was a success story of mine, I think, and it's worked well. I think the residents love it. I totally understand the concerns and I think if there is an alternative location that could work, it makes sense. I'll just also add that we're going to have a new Senior Center Director very shortly. We're going to have new town clerk very shortly. You know, so maybe those folks would have, you know, fresh set of eyes, some new ideas on how they could make it work. And obviously, having input from, from others is important, as you said, to get all the information before the board makes a decision.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you. Fran Baxter in seventy-six Cedar Hill Road, just after Mike's question, then you think this would be since this year is too late, it would be a great time for the representatives of the the town, the school, the Senior Center, and our new Senior Center Director to talk about how can we make it work? And then I like to think about how to get to yes. So I don't want to come up here and just say, oh, no, right? So how can we get to yes? But I think it has to be a collaborative effort and see if we can, you know, get it set up before they create their next schools, their schools of September of twenty-five, right? But I think we could work out something that would ease the concern that people have. Thank you. Thank you.
So Andy, after this May's election, the next election would be March.
Would be, so there's no, there's no March on the, so just town election next May and then the fall would be a primary in September and then a general election in November.
Okay.
Yep, it's only every four years we have the March presidential primary.
Right, so in theory, if we couldn't make a change now, then we would have a year to figure it out and get all of the details sorted out.
A lot of time to perfect it, yes.
Did you have something?
I mean, Kelly's the Chair of this book.
Oh, Kelly, I, I apologize. The the icons sometimes are kind of small and I don't catch them. Kelly?
No problem. It was just a last minute thing. I just wanted to say before closing, sorry, my dog. I I'm just very disappointed that there couldn't have been more information for you all tonight to make a decision on this. The schools have been housing this for many, many years. We've voiced our concerns. The superintendent's voiced it, the school committee's voiced it, parents have voiced it. And, you know, we thought that moving it to Mellican was kind of like the step to, you know, moving them out of the schools. And the fact that it's going to be now, okay, we're going to, this was what was told to us last year. Okay, well, we can't do it for November, but we can, you know, maybe do it for the May. And now we're saying, okay, well, we can't do it for the May, but maybe we could do it for the next one. It's just, when is it going to be decided and ruled on? And I just think that, you know, I I feel very sorry for those hundred seniors that are affected by a day, but you're impacting seven hundred people when they're in the school. So, I mean, if we're looking at numbers, there's your numbers right there.
Yeah, I'm I'm of the mindset that the election should not be at Mellican. I don't have enough to say they can be at the Senior Center because we haven't had the informal input from Council on Aging or the Senior Center Director that won't start for another week. Sorry to take away your, your announcement. You can do that later. And yes, I, I, yeah, I assure your concern, Kelly. I wish we had enough information to do this now, but this is, this is all we've got. Suzie?
I don't have to say my address again. I just, I, I'm, I didn't say the facts earlier because someone, I think Susan had mentioned about the school shootings. I remember Columbine, I was a senior in college. We sat there. Like, it changed everything, right? So in twenty twenty-five, we've already had three school shootings that have caused injury or death. In twenty twenty-four, there were eighty-three. So forty-three hundred voters for presidential election, two thousand for, I think, the, what was it, the state? They said voters came through. Were those the numbers?
In November, there were about forty-three hundred that voted in person.
And then, so schools closed that day, but then two thousand for the other election. So that, those were two thousand people just coming into Mellican.
Schools closed that day also.
Our schools closed. So what was the other? Do you have any of the other voters? Because that's, that's.
In September, when schools opened, four hundred and seventy-one people voted on Election Day at Mellican. In May of last year, five hundred and fifty-seven people voted at Mellican. May of the prior year, eleven hundred and forty-one people voted at Mellican. That was in twenty-three. And then November of twenty-two, in numbers, so more, thirty-eight hundred and fifty voted in November and then the September primary, again, when schools in session, we had thirteen hundred and eighty-one vote.
So I love, I love the higher numbers. Don't get me wrong. I love to vote. I love Election Day. I love polling signs. And I, you, you all will see me out there. I love it. It's like my favorite day. You know, like, I, I love, I love politics. I love municipal government. I love it. Local government is where it's at, right? This is where we make the difference. However, all those people are going to Mellican. The six, six hundred people. And most of those people are not residents of Northborough. And I'll tell you what, the five hundred and fifty-three students can't vote. They can't vote. So we're standing up here and we're representing them and we're making decisions. And I know we're letting the seniors weigh in and I get it. But they can vote. I mean, it can. So I just want you to remember that, like, the kids can't. They don't have a voice. They don't want their day disrupted. So I just want you to remember that, like, the kids can't. They don't have a voice. They don't want their day disrupted. It's sad, because like, who's looking out for them? You know, the door's not locked. And you guys are police officers, but it's, it's going to take one shooter to come in.
Thanks, Susie.
Okay, so I, I am lending support to changing the, the location. But to Andy's point, we want to do it brisk, because we don't want to go back. So what can we do? It sounds to me like it would be a very short timeframe to get the elections at Melican this spring. What, what could, could you put a couple extra people on?
For if we were to move it for the spring?
Either if we were to move it or Melican.
If we were to keep it just for this May, with the intent that we are going to study everything we have to study so that if and when it moves to the senior center, it's like, like butter, and it goes beautifully.
And I, I know you and I have spoken about this. You've added additional officers over the last few elections. Could you maybe summarize some of the changes?
Yeah, I mean, I, yes. First off, I thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, and I totally respect everyone's concerns on this, on both ends. You know, keep it, don't keep it there. What I can tell you is whatever's decided, we'll be prepared and we'll be, we'll go and we'll make it work wherever it's at. I can guarantee you that. To support Andy and what others have said, we need to keep it at one central location. That does work. That works best for us. We're able to kind of put all our chips in one pile, at one location. It just makes things easier. We can deploy officers just at one spot. Melican is, is a safe location that day. But I do hear the concern, parents. As a parent myself, I do understand their concerns completely. We have put on additional officers during the school day, whether in session or not in session. We've just recently had a security review with the Department of Homeland Security to review safety procedures there. We are waiting on that final report, but we, we're told we, we're doing things right. But if things were to change, I would think the senior center, with the support of the senior center director and the council on aging and your support, I think we can all work together. And that would probably, in my opinion, would probably be the next best option, to remove ourselves from the school and go, go to the senior center. I would think we would probably want to just involve the fire chief a little bit over capacity and things, things like that. I don't think that's going to be an issue. I was up there for the St. Patrick's Day dinner, and there was a lot of people in there. You know, so the traffic, parking, and the, you know, in and outs is difficult. You know, we might have some, if we were to move there, we'd have some maybe slight obstacles to overcome the first couple of times. But, you know, change is hard, but I think we could figure it out. So, yeah, we'll, we'll be, for this coming election, because I think, Julian, that's what you had asked about. We will have the same number of officers on that we did for the presidential. I don't like to say a number, just because it's kind of a security thing, but the building will be secured. We will have more than two officers there, I'll say that. And their visitors, voters are not allowed to enter Melican other than through the cafeteria. And they are not allowed to use restroom facilities. A voter cannot use the restroom there. We, we don't have to allow them to use the bathroom for security reasons. Obviously, through the situation, we would have someone escort someone down. But we've, we've really done a good job of securing the voting area just at the cafeteria. You come in, you leave out the same door. But we will have the same amount of officers on for the May election if you all think that it's, it's too quick to move polling locations. If we're discussed going to the senior center, we'll make it work.
Lisa, I see your end up.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate that, that you, what you will, and I'm sure you'll do a great job. I'm sure there can be a man, a man on the, on the road directing traffic. Barefoot Road's kind of a full, wide, quiet road, so that wouldn't be too bad. But I, I had a, I had someone ask me that, should the board think money and convenience outweighs a child's life? And that's a pretty strong statement or question. And I think that, I think that we really should move to do whatever we can as quickly as we can. And, and it is two months. Maybe we could manage to get all of this taken care of before the election coming up. But that's my, my final. Thanks.
Lisa. Mike?
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, I think we've obviously narrowed it down, right? So it's going to be in one location. The only other location in town that we can hold it is the senior center. So it's going to be, the senior center is going to be Melican. We are coming up close, right, to, to the, to the May election for this year. And then we don't have another one for an entire year until the next May. So there's an argument, right? Well, let's wait, figure it out for a year and then do it. Or you do it now, break what you're going to break. And now you have a year to figure out what you broke and how to fix it. You know, so I, I think we're all going towards that direction of, yes, let's get it out of the school. It's what the parents want, the school committee superintendent wants. I don't want to, you know, impose on, you know, the senior center. And, and, you know, you don't want to make a decision without getting input. But it is a municipal building, and if it's, you know, we see it as the best use of our resources, then that's what it is. So I would not be opposed to making a decision to move it to the senior center for this May. I think, you know, throws more at, at, at Andy to get, to get figured out, right? You know, and, and I appreciate all the effort and everything that, that goes in from, from all the stakeholders. And I'm just, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at, is, is given all the feedback, given everything we know already. We've been hearing this from the school committee for a while that they want it out of the schools. The safety concerns, I'm a parent with four kids, three of which are in the, the school systems and one will be soon. So I believe we have the same security concerns. But when you have armed officers at the school, that's when that risk is mitigated. Mitigated. If, when they're not there on a random day, is when those tragedies tend to happen. So I, I don't, you can't mitigate all risk in life. So to me, it's not the security piece, it's the disruption. Additional holidays have been added, so now you're adding additional days out of school. You know, I think I would be okay with this May. Let's, let's go for it. Let, let's do the senior center. Let's figure out, and this isn't anything against the people who are going to plan this, but let's figure out what works and what doesn't work, so that way we have a whole year to figure out how to fix it. Fix it, and then we have some more time until the next election, which would be a September primary, I believe you said.
It would be next May, a year from, a year from now.
Right, next May, and then the one after that.
Yeah, that would be May, September, and November. Six, okay. Yeah, I mean, if, if we can execute it, then I think it should be somewhere else this May. I do, before we make a decision, I think it's good to get the feedback and involvement of the new senior center director and the council on aging to, to fully understand their impact. I think we, we broadly understand it. They're, they're going to have to close those days. There's no way that they could have programs at the senior center.
Right.
When there's an election going on, given how busy it will be, certainly not the statewide elections. That's, that's real. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a real impact. We also know we sometimes close schools because of the election. That's a real impact. We know that 500 kids have to have lunch in a different place, and the staff has to prepare that. That's a real impact. There's real, there's no way to do this without negative impact. I think understanding what would the negative impact actually be? What would the actual safety issues be if we moved it to the senior center? Or maybe some other place will come up in discussion. We have, we have to make a decision on that by next meeting for this May. Are people open to having that discussion and considering a change for this May? I think I'm hearing discussion all around. It's moving. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, I would be in favor of having a vote, yes or no, on whether to move it this May.
Yeah.
But we can't vote tonight because it's not on the agenda.
I mean, we, we have, it says discussion, discussion usually. I mean, the, the action, the actual action is going to happen next week when we execute the warrant. Because that's going to be a real vote. I'm a little uncomfortable doing it for this May without getting feedback from all of the parties involved. I, I think that's important, because there might be something we are missing. But next, we're, next meeting, we're voting on this. And I think if there is consensus that we are at least seriously considering a new voting location for this May that provides direction to staff to go ahead and figure out how to do that and then come back at our meeting on April 7th and say, all right, you know, here's one warrant, here's another warrant with two different locations. Here, here's what will happen to make it work. And so that would cause both of the two of you and many others to really look at it in detail. Okay, what does it look like from beginning to end? And walk through it and then tell us, yeah, you can do it. Or no, you can't, or we can do it, and here are the downsides. I kind of like that idea of, you know, break it and then have a year to figure it out. That's, there's an advantage. I think that there are some advantages to the senior center in having a couple thousand extra people going through the building. There are, there's a huge percentage of Northborough residents that have never been to the senior center or went there once for their COVID shot and haven't been back since. Including a lot of seniors that, you know, don't think they're old enough to go to the senior center. Sending people through that incredible, beautiful building provides a marketing opportunity for the senior center and services. And there might be some secondary side benefit to their operations in the long run. I, I don't know that. I'd want to hear that thought process from the council on aging and staff. I don't want to assume that.
If I could just add, you know, I always say election's the most important thing that I do. Now, it's one of the most important things the town does, you know, is that we have elections for our residents, for our voters. You know, I want nothing more than that to be a good experience for everyone, for it to be safe, for it to be at a convenient location. If it's at the senior center in May, we'll make it work. I mean, that's an easy one, because the volume is pretty low. I don't see any issue with that. Not that I'm saying we should rush it. I just want to make sure, as Julianne said, if we're going to do this, it's a pretty significant thing to change, that we get it right the first time. But I do think there's an opportunity, as Mike said, to figure out what, what we're breaking and how to perfect it for next year. And ultimately, that will be a different person's problem.
I'll go ahead and break, and I, I think our question is, is your last election an easy one or a hard?
I don't know. We're up to the challenge. Plus, he, he needs to check out the senior center.
He shouldn't be up there.
Just if nothing else has occurred to see, we are already programmed out into June, so Tuesday, that Tuesday already has programming booked and stuff, and I'm not saying it's more important than the election. But as we said, courtesy, we're trying to be collaborative. I'm not really a fan of breaking and fixing. I like to get it right the first time, so if this May is not the right time, make the commitment that a subcommittee of some group is going to study it and, and figure out how it can work there, not forcing it on them at this month.
Thanks, Fran. Is there consensus from the board on asking staff to, to put time aside and work with everyone to determine a plan to make it work for this May, and then coming back for us for that decision?
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
I'm definitely in favor of this, and if she is going to be talking with the senior center director, could we also add in looking at moving it to Saturday for the municipal election as an option to keep it at Melican?
So I think that would require a bylaw change, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, so we would not be able to do that really for two more years, because
Okay.
Put a, put a bylaw change on the warrant and then it would impact.
And a later complicating factor of that, and I have suggested this in some offline conversations, I think Saturday is a good idea. But we'd need to coincide our elections with Southboro because of the region. So it would mean that Southboro would also have to agree to having their auctions on Saturdays.
I think, I mean, I think that's a good discussion to have. We're not, that's, that change is not possible for this May.
Correct.
Probably not for the next one either. Just due to the timing, okay.
But to answer your question, Mr. Chair, yes, I, I would be in favor of deciding, oh, next year.
Okay, so I think I see Mike and I see Laura. I see some nod, a nod from Lisa.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree. You know, if we can make it work, we make it work. I know this is some extra work on you. But I think it's, it's important. We've got to, we've got to figure this out. And, and hopefully we can. That certainly involves, I, you know, speaking with the council on aging. I don't think the council on aging has a meeting scheduled before April 7th. I think yours is April 8th. So I will leave that up to you to decide how to, how to process that. But April 7th is the date that we have to make the decision for this May. We can't wait any longer, because that's the date that we need to execute the warrant. Okay, any other, I don't think we need to vote on that. I think we, we strongly see consensus. Kelly, did you have anything else that you wanted to add to this?
No, just thank you to the board for your support in ma- making the movement to have it removed from the schools as much appreciated. So thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Might I ask a question of the parents? Is, if we get information that, that shows us that it will be very difficult to, to execute this for this May, would, would you be okay if we, if we did have to start it in 2026?
I, I knew from my work with Andy, when we had all the discussions about getting it out of the four schools and moving it to Melican, how long the process was going to be and how it would just have to be pulled unless he hadn't, even if he is an MP, I still have to make it up. He won't go to school that day.
Okay, so you, you understand how this is not?
I understand the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else on this item? All right, I think.
I do, I do want to say I appreciate the hard work from everybody. And I will come here and help stamp the postcards.
I'll bet Andy, yes, I'll bet Andy has your number.
He knows where I live, I'm sure. All these times I call his name, you think.
Great, all right, thank you, setting.
One at Susie's.
All right, so I think you, you know what needs, needs to take place.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that ends that item. Kelly, thank you very, very much for joining us and everyone else. But, all right, next up, we have, at 7:30 or 8:30, or whatever the case may be, a joint public hearing on the FY 2026 proposed budget with the Select and the Appropriations Committee, if the appropriations committee members would like to, to come forward. And I, I did have to turn your nameplates over to the people that were not you. Feel free to sit in those spots, you know, if you're in place. Thank you very much for reading. Obviously, we've got some important business we need to take care of. So, so here we are. So I will open, said, public hearing on the FY 2026 proposed budget. And Jason Little, our finance director, is here with a presentation. I imagine you're going to walk us through some stuff?
Yes. Mr. Chair, should we bring in, I mean, Tim Kellen, one of the members that the appropriations committee is, is remote.
Yeah.
I think we should bring him in.
Thank you for noticing that. Tim, I'm bringing you in.
And procedurally, do I need to call?
You probably do need to call yourselves to order.
Okay, so I'll call to order the appropriations committee. Since we are hybrid, I'll do a roll call vote, just to, our roll call indication, to let everybody hear and be heard. So I am Scott Rogers, Judge Frankel.
Here.
Terry Halleran.
Here.
And Tim Kellen.
You.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. We already rested the hybrid meeting script at the beginning, so I think we can skip that one. Steph, you want Jason to take it from here?
Yes, sure.
Great, well, thank you. Well, at the start of the fiscal year 2026, we missed a little budget public hearing. These are the highlights that we're going to be presenting tonight. We have a balanced FY 2026 budget. It's a level services budget that we're presenting to you tonight. There is no new staff proposed within the budget. And then another important note is that the five-year contracts currently in negotiation. So there's a provision within the budget to sell, sell the contracts and provide for those. The tax, under this proposed budget, the taxes increase within Proposition 2 and 1/2, using excess levy capacity. No financial reserves were used in the operating budget beyond the $500,000 as have been prior years in free cash. It complies with the town's financial policies. It funds the Open Trust Fund at $600,000. That's level funded with the current year. Contributes $200,000 to the stabilization fund to maintain reserve ratios. And it begins a special purpose stabilization fund to begin saving for eight additional firefighters that were hired this current year. And it's proposed at $400,000. The budget continues funding capital projects and minimizes debt to be incurred. Okay, so, all right. Here are some milestones throughout the labeled FY 2026 budget process. So these are some of the milestones that happened along the way to developing this budget. On August 1st, 2024, we held a, a meeting called the Financial Summit. At this meeting, the department, town departments, long-range needs were discussed at this meeting. And then it was also, we revealed the five-year projections. And those projections revealed that the Proposition 2 and 1/2 excess levy capacity that the town has is exhausted through the next two years. Additionally, the tax impact of operating budgets, including the fire station project and other C I P items debt service, were discussed at, at that meeting. On October 7th, 2024, a special town meeting was held. The fire station project passed. There's an appropriation that passed at that meeting. And that was contingent on Proposition 2 and 1/2, that exclusion valid election. And then, as we all know, on November 5th, the fire station project ballot question passed. So that effectively moves the project forward.
And it's a good time to remind everyone that the bits came in six and a half million dollars.
So, moving forward, November 13th was the, was the date that the budget instructions were distributed to departments this year. And we had a return date of December 9th for departments to return their budgets to the administration and myself. So, starting in December, the town administrator, Steph, and I met with all departments internally, ranging from December through leading up until March. So, in concert with that, in January, the financial committees began meeting. The appropriations committee with you tonight has held seven meetings, not counting tonight, seven meetings so far, and have, have met with the larger departments. The financial planning committee, the capital planning committee, has held eight meetings, not counting tonight. They are here with their report delivered to the slide board or discuss their, their report if need be. That was, they met with all departments with capital improvement plan requests. In January, one of the, the big complicating factors in this year's budget has been the health insurance. We've probably talked about it a lot. Everybody probably knows about this, but I'm going to repeat it anyway. In January, we received claims data from our, our consultants indicating a 10% to 12% increase was likely in our premiums. At the time, we looked closely at our roster of covered people. As most people probably remember, that employee benefits has been a, a source of returning appropriations and, and becoming part of free cash at, at a considerable amount in the past couple of years. So we had some surplus to provide for people with qualifying events and unexpected involvements in, in the health insurance. So we pared that number back so that we could get it in with 8% and fit within some reasonable budget increases. Fast forward to the end of February, we, we came, met with, we had an emergency meeting that I wasn't there for, but with the consultants, where they brought back to us, the renewal rate was 24.9%, not 10 to 12%. So that quickly goes from being, having a balanced budget with a more reasonable increase to being something that would, we would need an override in '26. A Proposition 2 and 1/2 override in '26 or drastic cuts. So that's where we're at now. We're currently at 19.9% for our renewal with the health insurance. There's not a, a lot of runway that we could negotiate changes with employees and benefit design. There, there's not a lot that's being offered. Most people probably know, I know I've said this so many times, but we are partners with the schools and the town of Southborough in a joint purchasing arrangement for increasing the size of our risk pool. So it's, there, there's 1,500 people covered by our health plans. So we have a sizable health plan. And we're, we're working with them to see what kind of options are out there. There's not a lot of good options. One of the suggestions was self-insuring, which I think we're all going to dismiss right, right out of the gate as being a bad idea. But currently in the budget you're seeing tonight, we're, we've currently worked with the schools and one other element where we've worked with the schools was they brought forward an idea that saved approximately, didn't save, but it's shifting approximately $122,000 for the cafeteria workers' health insurance and charging that to the, 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 um, the school lunch program. And that brought our budget in to set at 17% using a 19.9% assumed renewal with, with Harvard Pilgrim or, or carrier. So, what are the revenue assumptions for the budget? Tax receipts, they're 82% of the budget. That's the, the, the largest source of our revenue that, that supports our, our general fund operations. Those are set to increase 10.66% or 6.86 million to 71.44 million. Within that, new growth is estimated at $30 million of value. Amounts to $428,000 more of capacity. The excluded debt, fire station debt service, we've estimated that, that, that may come down slightly. But, but not significantly. I mean, we, we put together a conservative budget, but we tried to minimize how much we were borrowing upfront. And so what it will mean is that the, the amounts projected for town meeting will, will play out to be less. But the, the impact in one year may, may be the same because we were going to minimize the borrowing and then have a cleanup bond at the end of the project. So regardless, within the budget, the excluded fire station debt service is, of, of that increase is 2.49 million. State aid, that's 7% of the pie. We have numbers saying it's increased 2.83% or $175,000 to 6.36 million. And we're using the governor's budget numbers, which were released in January. And that process, no, the process is ongoing with, with the legislature. We probably won't know our final number until June or July. And as, as, as that process unfolds, it's not likely to change very much or in a material way. Our local receipts, we increased them a small amount to get to 4.5 million. That, that amounted to about $70,000. It's about 2% increase. And then the rest of the, the pie is made up of other available funds. We're using $500,000 in free cash to be used in the operating budget. And our use of free cash totals 4.13 million because of the, the pays-as-you-go capital and some of the other uses. So that amounts to 5% of the, the total budget. And then lastly, we transfer money in from other available funds. And that totals $792,000. So that's about 1% of, of the revenue. So this year, for the free cash plan, for our fiscal policies, we have a free cash policy of what we can use free cash for. And then we have a, our free cash policy says that we will develop a free cash plan annually. So that free cash plan involved taking the $4.6 million that was certified and using 4.1 million to first fund capital at $2.8 billion. Fund the reserve, annual reserve fund, appropriations committee reserve fund at $175,000. Transfer money to stabilization from, from free cash to stabilization for $200,000. Create the special purpose stabilization at $400,000. Fund the historic district commission's request for $15,000 for a revolutionary 250th iteration event. And apply $500,000 to the operating budget. So what this does is leaves $500,000 in reserves. So again, we've talked about state aid at length in some of these presentations in the past. The, again, the governor's budget released in January, increased a 2.83% increase for Northborough. Chapter 70 education aid represents 71% of the, the $6 million we get from state aid. Unrestricted general government aid represents 22%. Both of those sources only increased 2% over the prior year. One thing that's important to note about state aid, we're making an estimate. And if we make a conservative estimate and we get more, what that does in effect when we find out what the amount is later in the year after town meeting, generally, that can only be used to reduce the, the tax burden. So it will, it's a, it's a conservative estimate we make. And it only affects by reducing taxes later if it comes in higher than what we've estimated. So again, this is kind of the example of using state aid as, as a, a major source of the budget. It's on a reducing, reducing trend. It's not keeping up with our local revenues. So this is, this is the effect. This is the trend year after year. It's, it's taking a, a smaller share of, of the, of the budget. So last year, we presented some town demographics and talked about it. And so I updated those and I just felt like it was, it would be important to look at some of the changes from between last year and this year. And I don't know if people know this, but the, the Department of Revenue with the state maintains a ton of data. You can go on their webpage. You can go to what's called the data bank and find all kinds of information about Northborough, about all the communities in the state. We're, we're regulated by the state. We report to the state with, in, in a lot of different ways. We give them so many numbers and those are recapitulated in this data bank. So that's where we go for this data. So I'm taking the data straight from there. The average home value for, for this data has gone up 6.34%. The average tax bills got up 6.12% between, from year to year. The overall property value that's taxable in town has increased 6% as well. We have a single tax rate. That, that rate has declined slightly as a result. And our mix of residential property, taxable property versus commercial, industrial, personal property, C I P in this context, not capital improvement plan, it stands for something else, commercial, industrial, personal property. But that mix is 7327. So 73% of our taxable property is residential and 27% is, is commercial, industrial and, and this, business related. So another data point that the, that you can look at on the state's page is what residents have filed for income taxes through the D O R. And this measure that, that they find that this, this is, I'm not making this up. It, it's increased between the two years when, when you look this up by 18.53%. So when we go to this next slide where we start comparing ourselves to.
Jason, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Income tax or income?
In, in, income, income tax. And, and I'm sorry, no, that, that's, I believe that's income.
I think it's.
From, from tax returns.
From tax.
Reported income. Reported, so. So, thanks for, thanks for. Um, so, yes, so when you divide the number of residents by, it, it comes out to the $76,000 as per capita income. If 15,663 residents, you divide 1.196 billion and it should come out to $76,000. So again, this is another table. This is data taken from the state of our residents. And we look at these in the context of where we are in comparison to our neighbors and region. Some important things that I'd like to note. Again, here's our 27% commercial industrial. There's, there's some benefit and I'm, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about it and I might trip on my words here, but there, there's the, the fact that businesses don't have the service demands that residents do. So there's a informal shifting that happens as a result of us having this high level of commercial industrial property in town whereby the residents are, are helped with that. If, if you look at our, some of our percentages, our tax effort, this measure is simply taking the per capita income and dividing the tax bill by the per capita income and that comes to 12.39. So we have a lower tax burden per capita by that measure as the town of Grafton, who only has 8.68% of C I P percentage. So there, there's some inferences that can be drawn from this. Additionally, one thing that you can draw from this as well is that what's interesting here is that Southborough are one of our neighbors. We share a school district with them. They have a considerably higher per capita income. They have a considerably higher tax bill. But their tax effort by this measure is considerably lower. So a, again, lower C I P as well. Just interesting inferences can be drawn from, from this data. And again, if you were to graph this, we've looked at this in, in this form of a graph before, where, where we rank amongst our neighbors. This is where we are on that, on that tax effort. That's the 12.39% compared to, you know, Hudson has a lower tax bill. They have a, possibly have a harder time paying their tax bill at a lower rate based on income levels. Again, Southborough, what's interesting here, they have the highest tax bill from, from the grouping, lowest level of tax effort.
And Jason, quick question. That would basically, the, looking at between Southborough and Northborough, basically because of the higher, almost more than double per capita income, but the home values are probably closer to value and that's why the income tax effort would be lower or the property tax effort?
Yeah, well, the property tax bill is higher, but the income level is that much higher.
Right.
So the, the property values are, are higher as well as the income levels, but the income levels are enough to, to shift this, this percentage, this, this direction. This is looking at some of the same data and, and again, I know this is hard to read and there's a lot of colors on this screen, but this is our statewide ranking among the other 350 towns, cities and towns in the state. The scale here is, is ranking of single-family tax bills. And what this demonstrates, the, the black line up here at the top, that's Southborough's. They're somewhere between 40 and 20 across these years. Below that is Westborough. Below that is Northborough. So Northborough's has trended around the, the 60s in, from the 50s into the 60s. And then it's, it, it's dropped into the, the 70s. So we're getting closer to our other neighbors in, in, in this measure as, as we look at this data. So it's, it's just an interesting way because what's factoring in, in a region and the demographics are similar, we're going to be facing some of the same challenges as, as our neighbors. All right. So this is a very dense slide, but I wanted to give away some of my secrets of how we we produce some of these numbers. We're going to estimate the tax impact of this budget and don't look at the bottom yet. So this is how we estimate the tax impact for for a single family home. We took what's actually data. Six sixty four oh four five is the average single family home value in North Borough. And we've in consultation with the assessor's office, they they have some early ways to look at some of where this the sales data is going and so forth. So it supports an assumption that you would increase the value five percent for F Y twenty six. So six sixty four oh four five plus five percent equals six ninety seven. So we are modeling our tax impact on a single family home valued at six hundred ninety seven thousand dollars. The tax base. The F Y twenty five tax base, the total taxable value of town is four point five two billion. That's that's residential properties and the commercial industrial personal property. It totals four point five two billion. It's estimated to increase in our model to four point seven one billion for F Y twenty six. And where did that number come from? We took the residential values, which are three point three billion and added five percent. And then we took the commercial industrial personal property values and inflated those two percent to be conservative. So that raises to one point two four billion. So that's where we get the four point seven one. So to model the tax impact, we then take the the tax levy from our model, which is calculated at seventy one point two million. And then we divide it by the tax base to get to a tax rate. And then we apply that tax rate to the single family home. And that's why we're we're estimating an average tax bill to be ten thousand five hundred fifty three dollars for F Y twenty six based on on this budget model. So the impact is ten thousand five five three minus the average single family tax bill from F Y twenty five, which is nine four sixty three. So that amounts to one thousand ninety dollars or eleven point five percent. I see Lisa has her hand up, maybe on something on slide Lisa.
Yes. So when I see the residential, hi Jason, thanks for all the hard work. When I see the residential value at three point three billion plus five percent, and then the C I P value is only at two percent. We all pay the same tax rate. Why does their value not go up equally?
Well, because they're valued separately and we have to make predictions for what the growth and the adjustment to the values are. It's this this model isn't saying that they're going to pay a different tax rate. They're going to pay the same tax rate. It's just a prediction talking to the assessor's office about where where values are going. So again, this does not reflect that they're getting a break. They're paying the same tax rate as residences. It's just we're trying to accurately predict where the tax rates is going.
Well, but then I know that I know that they're not, you know, that it's the same rate. It's just that if ours goes up every year at five percent as a resident and this the the C I P value only goes up at two percent. That's my question. Do their land, is their land less valuable? Is their product less valuable? That's that's kind of the the balance that I've often wondered because every year, I know my taxes go up every year and there's five percent every year and but my income does not. Where commercial industrial has some control over how they they bring money in. So I just want to better understand why we're at five and they're at two.
I think if I could that's all right. I just try to answer it and maybe using some different words. It's really just to to come up with an estimate for what the tax base is going to be. The values are calculated separate from that and it's we could say it's five percent too. I I could come forward here and say that's a five percent increase. That'll lower the tax rate. I mean, if we if we say it's going to grow the tax base is going to grow ten percent, we could lower the tax rate and and deliver a lower number here. But it's really just to try to come up with a method to show what the the tax impact's going to be through the rate and what's what's going on with the overall tax base. So the point of showing this here in this much detail was to reveal some of the methods that are used and how we tried to come up with with a predictive model of of what's actually going to happen.
Lisa, did that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, it doesn't doesn't take care of my concern, but it answers my question. Thank you.
So have you calculated the impact, you know, the bowl down there is for residential? What is the tax impact in percentage on C I P?
The same.
It's also eleven point five percent?
Correct. They they pay the same rate. Yes.
Yes, they pay the same rate, but the impact will be different because their value is going up less. Their suspect is going up less.
This may have been too complicated of a slide to include it here. We're really just trying to calculate what the rate is on when when we present these models, we're doing it based on the residential taxpayer. And and we're not typically presenting this to the whole host of of all of the the taxpayers that are that are paying taxes. One thing to consider, the two percent involves personal property. Personal property is the equipment and machinery, the the buildings and the equipment. That has a a a very quick depreciation schedule, whereas homes inflate in value, personal property depreciates in value. So that's why we're trying to capture some of the nuances to that model where it's not a straight line of everything increases five percent.
Right. But I think in the future, when we discuss tax rate, that's a really important number to remember.
That will be broken down when we set the tax rate in the fall. We'll get more into the individual values and what actually happens. What we're doing now is trying to predict what's going to happen next fall.
Sure.
Okay, in in a very broad way, so we can get to a tax rate and talk to residents about what their tax impact would be. So we all pay the it's one single rate that 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 gets revisited every year in in the fall. So there'd be the opportunity to shift rates. But the point of this was to try to show that it's a conservative model where we are trying to offer some market insights into what's happening so that we're not understating what the potential impact is and that then we can deliver a better result when it comes time to set the tax rate in the fall.
Jason, on on this slide, the thousand ninety impact, obviously that includes the start of the debt payments on the fire station.
Yeah.
We haven't done the borrowing for that. Should we decide to borrow less as a result of the mid savings of six point five million dollars, which is such wonderful news? Would you be able to provide an updated impact figure, you know, in advance over at town meeting?
Yeah, it's since we tried to on the front end to reduce the borrowing as much as possible, it's potentially not going to change.
Okay.
So we we tried to minimize that on the front. When we did the long term projections for the taxpayer impact, that involved that 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 involved borrowing everything upfront. Whereas we've reduced it. This budget year is what we are likely going to go forward with with the borrowing plan. Again, I have a couple of days until I hear back from the O P M to get actual numbers there. And then we'll make a decision in terms of like structuring the bonds that we're going forward with, working on currently. So we got a little a little bit of opportunity at the lead to to change the structure of the bond that we're working on. But
But if we need to in the aggregate for the project borrow maybe six point five million dollars less. And we don't do that with the first borrowing. I know there's going to be a borrowing at the end of the project. We would make up that difference.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, Lisa, you got your hand up?
Yes. Well, one last question. And again, I'm trying to I'm trying to look for the future. All all arrows are pointing to a recession again or problems with with businesses staying in business, staying in their locations, with people losing their jobs, with state funding being narrowed down. Have you put in any any padding or expectation of that happening in this in this budget year?
Yeah, we complied with all of our financial policies for general stabilization for reserves. So that's what it's there for. We just did some research. The town of Hudson is facing a four million dollar override, Grafton eight million dollar override. It's inevitable. It as soon as next year, we could be facing override situations, but it's due to the strong financial stewardship that has been the town of North Borough where we do have those funds that we can rely on in times of trouble, which yeah, as you can see, we're we're close. We have a little over a hundred thousand in levy capacity right now. So we went from an amount that was a lot, a lot richer to to becoming very lean. But that's why we have these financial policies. We're actually doing a lot better than a lot of our neighbors.
Well, right now we may be, but and I agree that we have some things in place, but nothing more than we've had in the past. And I do think that there's something that is coming down the pike and just the knowledge of that, well, it's kind of an inevitable. I don't think the taxpayer is looking forward to hearing that. I think they're looking to hear, let's look at how we can be a little bit better in terms of carving. And and levy capacity is understood in, you know, in our world. But again, levy capacities increase because we have taken on a big project right now being the fire station. So that levy limit got increased for the next thirty years as the loan's going to be to be higher. And even though it's it's on the paper as being higher, income is not necessarily getting any higher. That's going to be able to pay for the extra taxes. So that's that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, then we're also, I mean, you can't turn your head toward it. It's the reality of inflation as well. So to, you know, lead with a two and a half percent every year. It's we it's it was in twenty twenty two that it was projected we would be exactly where we are right now. So again, have to great financial reporting and and projections.
Lisa.
All right. So here's a couple of my other tricks and I'm just going to share them with everybody. If you wouldn't need to calculate tax impact, every forty seven thousand dollars amounts to one cent in the tax rate. And every one cent in the tax rate of the home value is one thousandth of that. So a six hundred ninety seven thousand dollar house, one cent in the tax rate costs that person six dollars and ninety seven cents. If your house was a million dollars, it costs ten dollars to you. So in terms of quick tax tax impact, one cent in the tax rate, forty seven thousand dollars, one cent in the tax rate, impact seven dollars. That's that's my trick and I'm happy to share it with everybody.
A magician.
Hopefully you still need me, but okay, so this is the this is the calculation of the tax levy that the budget is is drawing from. There's the levy limit from last year plus two, two and a half percent. When I say last year, I mean the current year we're in. At at two and a half percent, that's proposition two and a half. You add new growth at thirty million dollars of value. And then that's your levy limit. So that increases two million dollars. Then we add our debt exclusions. These are the amounts of debt from previously approved debt excluded projects. There's the library, the senior center, there's the Algonquin at Ren project, and then there's debt involved with the Lincoln Street School project. As well as the fire station project where we've modeled debt to to come in based on the bond that we're working on. Those increases amount to two point four four one million. So that then you get to your maximum allowable levy and then that backs into the total tax receipts in our unused capacity. So our unused capacity, that has been used, two point four million dollars of unused levy capacity has been used to produce a balanced budget this year. And that's increasing tax receipts and point six six percent. So the rest of the picture. Total tax receipts, ten point six six. These are the the free cash allocations that have been made toward the budget for four point one two seven. Local receipts, four point five million. The other funds that comes to a total of eighty seven million dollars for general fund revenues. That's a nine point six nine percent increase. We also have enterprise funds listed here. I didn't prepare to speak much about the enterprise funds. Those are going up two point one two percent in total. So that's what that looks like on a pie chart. This is the general fund only. So that's the seventy one point two. And the the whole picture is eighty seven million. That's what it looks like in his pie chart. This is what the expenses that that balance that look like from a pie chart. So moving on, we get a chance to see this again later, but moving on to what what that covers. Within the what's called the town budget, we we consider the town budget. The general administration, general administration here is is showing going up fourteen percent. But that includes the provision for union contract settlements. If we did not have that included, the the general administration, that budget would only be going up about seventy five thousand dollars. Or it would be about two point two percent. So oh, yeah, we'll get there. We'll get there. Well, but this is this includes the the provisions for union contracts, which are going to be spread across other other categories like public safety, public works and some of some of the other budgets. So it's not not general administration's fault that it's going up fourteen percent.
No.
So next part of
Before you go on, what why would you increase in personnel board?
That that's the provision for union.
The five unions, the contract year. Oh. And and is that like, are you padding that or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, well done padding, but we need to be able to put money aside because we are not sure what the negotiations are going to end.
Oh, okay. Yes, I'm sorry.
So that's the that's the total pot there for merit pay for non contractual people that get merit pay under the the pre Al Bylaw town. But it also includes the the amount for for the union contract settling the union contracts. In addition to that, we have some money in there for some longstanding employees that have announced retirement and are on the more generous old vacation plan where they're they're entitled to a payout that they'll get an accrual on July first. And they're they'll be entitled to an accrual of their their vacation time. So we we've got provision in there to cover that as well. Okay, so that that's kind of a one time effect that that doesn't usually affect the town in any given year.
Every three years, you'll see the union contract.
Lisa, put your hand up. And you're muted? And you're still muted?
Sorry about that. I'm going to go back to what Julianne was asking some questions about because I noticed that myself. Is this is this every time, does this happen every time that you have your three year contractual negotiations?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
So then what happens to the, does it, because it's a one time difference? Is it the next two years that the budget is increased in those individual departments to bring that? So it doesn't show under personnel board?
Yes, but then in year two, we will know exactly how much to put into the budget. It's during the negotiation year that we have to project.
Okay, all right, because I mean, that was a surprise to see such a big, big jump. But thank you.
Right. So maybe you'll be surprised to see such a low jump when you get to public safety and that's two point and that's 2.64% increase. So that will likely increase in actuality when money is transferred from that after contracts are settled. Public Works as well, they've produced a budget for a 4% increase. Human Services in total, 4.37%. Culture Recreation is in total a decrease of 1.73%. That's in part to us shifting some of the aspects of the cable TV contract. And the transfer in, as people, part of the transfers in that make up 1% of the revenue picture is a transfer from the cable revenues, and that matches this exactly. So the cable revenues underwrite the cable TV department. So that's offset the reduction here in Culture Recreation. So overall, including the provision for those wages, the town departments are up 6.3%. If we subtracted that out, it would be more like 3.6%. Those are in there. I mean, it's an eventuality that those contracts will be settled. So it's 6.3% for town departments, the level service budgets. So within the town budget, there's the town departmental request. So we just talked about 6.3 or $960,000 of the budget. There's also an increase in non-excluded debt service. These are, this is debt service that we're going to be issuing for things that we had not issued debt for previously. There's the DPW tight tank and the fire state, the fire engine that we're borrowing for. We're going to have a debt service payment for those items, and those were not excluded debt service. So it's not included with the things on the top line, increasing our capacity to tax. So it has, it comes, tax will impact either way, but it's within the town's budget. Health insurance, that's the effect of the 17% increase. That's an increase of $1.1 million. The retirement assessment, that's an increase of $237,000. That's actually a lower number than we predicted originally. And it's a, we've, we're part of the Worcester Regional Retirement System, which is a multiemployer pension system. We, we and about 100 other towns belong to that system, and we're actuarially rated within that system. And they have committed to increasing their appropriations 10% every year. We did fare better than the other towns, because ours is only going up 7.64% rather than 10%. Although it's a very large number that we have to account for every year. The solid waste subsidy is increasing this year by $62,000 to balance the solid waste enterprise fund and continue that program. And then we have other fixed costs, which are most the other, the building insurance and everything else, the offsets from the state assessments and so forth. Those are just all categorized, and those total 5% are $97,000. So what's considered the town budget is increasing 9.87%. So these things, if you break them down, this is part of the $1,090 that was broken down. The health insurance, part of the $1,090, 170 of that is for the health insurance increase. $39 of that is the Worcester Regional Assessment. $10 is the cost of raising the solid waste subsidy. All the other fixed costs, the $97,000, $54. So those total $272 of the 1,090. The $960,000 for the 6.3% increase on town departmental requests, it's $160. So overall, of the 1,090, the town's budget is increasing for $132 of the 1,090. So moving on to the schools, that portion of the budget.
Lisa's got her hand up probably for the prior slide.
Yes, in the prior slide. Just to get clarity, on the health insurance, is everybody now on every, like, I know the school has now given, given the municipality the health insurance bill or whatever it is. So it's lowered their needs, but it's increased, it's increased needs on the other side. So does that health insurance now cover everybody equally across the board, whether they work in the town offices, whether they work as a teacher, whether they work in the DPW? Are they all the same?
It's, they're offered the same plan. So within that health insurance number that's carried within the town, which it's an important note, and thank you for bringing up, that people should understand that 70% of, or 71% of that number is the school employees' insurance in coverage. So we budget for it on the town side and carry that. It's an expense either way, no matter where you carry it. But within the town's budget, it includes, you know, the Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment covers school employees as well, it's the majority of the town. Our town employees, our municipal, public safety, public works, general government employees. Most of that assessment is related to the town employees. The school employees are included there, too. So things within the town budget are education expenses as well, if that answers your questions.
Yes, and I would think even for budgeting, it makes it easier, doesn't it, for you to have it all in one place as opposed to each department having their own?
Yeah, I don't, throughout my time here, we've never budgeted for it in separate departments. But, but yeah, I agree, it's easier to administer it. The treasurer's office in town here administers the health insurance plans. So the town and the school employees, their health plans are administered through our office here.
Okay, and then lastly, the solid waste subsidy. Can you just let me, fill me back in on what the subsidy part is? So, yeah, what do you mean by subsidy?
Well.
You're filling in.
Well, the subsidy is that the enterprise fund, in order for that to be made whole, we need to subsidize it through the general government budget. So basically, the solid waste enterprise fund, they need to raise about $1.4 million to cover their contracts. They're short by a certain amount, based on the revenue is level every year. About $500,000 to $550,000 is bag fees that we collect. There's a buffer with, they have their own free cash, they're allocating fund balance to it. And then the difference is solid waste subsidies. So we have contracts with a hauler, we have contracts with a disposal company. So transfer station, not transfer station, you know, the wheel of brater.
Well, Melbourne, yeah.
To dispose of the waste. So those things together, we're on the contract. We're collecting about the same amount every year, so that's going to increase, because we've entered into a contract for the trucking company and wheel of brater, where we have to pay those contracts.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just ask a question, Jason. On the retirement assessment, understand our assessment, right, we're in Worcester Regional. I think they've set, from the materials that I'd seen, full funding goal for 2031?
2036.
It's 2036.
Yeah, so through the statute, all retirement systems have to be fully, public retirement system have to be fully funded by 2040. They are targeting 2036.
Okay, would that afford a four-year difference make any substantive difference in our retirement assessment? Would that provide any group relief? If they were to say allow it 2040?
I don't know. If they extended it up to 2040, I don't know. We have looked at, when we do our OPEB valuations, we have calculated reallocating any savings we get from the retirement once retirement system is fully funded, to start funding OPEB at a much more substantial rate. So our valuation of the OPEB trust fund, or our OPEB liability, involves reallocating the Worcester regional money that's being made up for their shortfall in funding. Once they're fully funded, we've basically planned to use that surplus from the retirement toward the OPEB and the other long-term liability.
Right, okay, yeah, that makes sense. So even at full funding, there's still going to be a hefty assessment, and it's just going to go over towards.
Well, we're just going to apply that. I might not be here in 2036, you never know. But it'll be up to somebody to decide to fund the OPEB trust fund at that point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so on to the schools. These are their requests, the K-8 school department. They came in at 2.99%. In part, because we've worked with the schools, they were responding to the 70% of their employees. I mean, 70% of our health insurance increases related to school employees. So I think we've worked, collaborated with the superintendent to, they, they, they were at a higher amount, they came back, they revised their budget downward. You have Algonquin assessments, I mean, what's important to note about Algonquin is that they're an entity of their own. They are facing the same inflationary factor. They pay an assessment to the retirement system as well, much smaller, obviously, because they don't pay a reserve. One to the mass teachers' retirement system, they pay one for their school employees that aren't covered by the mass teachers' system. So they are paying some of the same, that, like, employee benefits that we are through their budget. The same thing's happening to them because of the JPA, they have the same health plan at the region. So the same effect there, they're factoring in covering those costs in their budget, in their assessment, in their operating assessment. So they're coming at 5.33%. That's made up of an operating assessment, that's $14.9 million, $14.96 million. That's an increase of $939,000, 6.69% increase. They have a cap, pay-as-you-go capital assessment. It's $175,000 total, our share of it is $107,000. They have the debt assessment to us, which is excluded from proposition 2.5, for the Adren project, that's $641,000. And then they also are assessing us for non-excluded debt for their athletic complex at $190,000. In two years, the, in '27, the, or '28, I believe, the Adren project is going to drop off, and they're going to, they've targeted issuing debt, permanent debt for the athletic complex. So that capacity will likely be taken up with the non-excluded debt for the athletic complex when that happens. ACABET's assessment went up 21%. And we ended up having eight more students that are attending there. So there's an increase in that assessment as well. So overall, the impact from the $1,090 that we talked about earlier, the schools make up 343%, $343 of that. So these are the totals. Town budget, 9.87, schools, 4.31. The Warren articles that we talked about, being funded with free cash. We have a transfer to OPEB, which is level as prior, same as prior year. Excluded debt service is going up significantly because of the debt for the fire station project. Our other funds are going down in part because of the cable fund. And no adjustments yet. Those adjustments are things that change when we post the tax rate involved. So overall, that's where the expenses that balance the 9.69 in revenues go in terms of expenditures. And again, this is what makes up the pie of the expenditures. So a summary of that tax impact. Fixed costs, including health insurance, $272. Town departments, $160, so a subtotal of $432. Excluded debt service, which includes the fire station, $360. School budgets, $343. New revenue has a negating effect. New revenue and some other reductions, $45. So that's how we back into, we get $1,090, that's the source of it.
I have a quick question.
Oh, yeah, Laura, sorry.
No problem, sorry about that. So for the reduced, can you go back one slide, please? So for the new revenue and other effects reduced, is that related to businesses closing? Or what is that related to?
No, that's, that's an effect of increased revenue, so that's reducing the impact.
Got it, okay.
What that is, is the additional state aid, the additional $175,000, and some of the other things that increase the additional $70,000 in local receipts that we plugged into the model. So that's, that has a negating effect on the impact when revenues come in higher.
Thank you for clarifying that, got it.
No problem. So again, what is the status of our reserves at the end of this? This is just a restatement of the free cash plan that was put forward. We have $500,000 at the end of it. $200,000 from free cash is going to the stabilization fund. So we add $200,000 to our current stabilization fund balance that was at the end of December. That's $6.3 million. So our reserves, stabilization and free cash is $6.8 million. So versus an $87 million budget, that's basically 8%. And that's within the town's 5% to 10% policy target for maintaining reserves.
That's a nice reserve. What kind of interest rate are we giving up?
Well, it varies, it varies depending on market conditions, but. Off to my head, I don't have an answer for you. But, you know, it could be 5%, you know. Because we have the ability of investing the stabilization fund in higher income yielding investments than we do with the general fund.
Sure, yeah.
So the capital budget, the Financial Planning Committee reviews the capital requests and has met with every department. And those totaled 6.348 million for 2026. So that's being funded with, there are 16 articles that totaled $2.8 million from free cash. The $107,000 is part of the Algonquin assessment. So that's part of the, we have that targeted from the tax levy. The plan is less anticipated grants for the street skate project and the body worn cameras for the police. That totals the 148, 656. Cable funds, buy a new server, which we obviously need. And CPA funds, that's white list design that the, was part of, it's a town-owned asset, so part of the capital plan, but it's being funded from CPA funds. Enterprise funds, free cash, water sewer enterprise funds are buying, are proposed to buy a truck. So it would come from water sewer enterprise funds, free cash. They have their own free cash certifications. And then $2 million of borrowing authorizations. So only one of these would affect the general fund, and that's proposed to be the downtown street skate project, which is 1.1 million. We, that's the balance of what was left over for general fund obligated projects that we didn't have enough free cash remaining to fund entirely. So that's the downtown street skate project, an ambulance that would, the debt service would be paid from the ambulance revolving fund, and then the utility bridge project that the debt service would be paid from the water enterprise fund.
Lisa?
And that's the pie chart of those sources.
And Lisa has a question, I assume, on the prior chart. Lisa, you're muted.
Muted again. Thank you very much. You're going pretty quickly there, Jason, good job. But what happens if the anticipated grants don't come in? Where does that money go, or where does it come from?
I believe that the 40- I believe that the forty eight thousand dollar body worn camera, I think we have an award letter for that one and we will get that one. I think probably what you're talking about is the million dollars that we're anticipating getting for the street skate project. And my understanding is that that project will just be scaled, scaled back.
Oh, scaled back. So whatever the amount that's given to them at town meeting is what they want.
Yeah, so the articles are not going to count on, the funding is not being counted on for the articles and what we're putting forward. They've been netted out of the plan.
Thank you.
This is what that looks like on a pie chart. So I just have some concluding slides here. So our average tax bill is estimated to be ten thousand five hundred fifty three dollars for FY twenty six. So did that come out of nowhere or did we look at that and see that coming with our prior projections? So I went back to our December twenty twenty two Financial Trend Management System meeting, which was, you know, kind of relating to be the financial summit in August. But look at FY twenty six, ten thousand four hundred eighty four dollars. That's, that's what we predicted. Pretty, pretty close. This is, and I'm not making this up because you can look at this stuff that's online. What did we say at the finance, at the August twenty twenty four summit meeting? Somehow it came out to ten thousand four hundred, different, different model, different circumstances, just coincidences it came out to the same amount. So these were predicted at these, at these meetings. Again, it sounds like a huge number. It was predictable, especially given the fire station project moving forward. And what this was showing was that there was gonna be a large jump, no matter what year we started paying debt service on the fire stations. Back in twenty twenty, this twenty twenty two meeting, we obviously thought we were gonna be starting the project earlier. And we predicted that the debt was gonna start in twenty twenty five, which, which it didn't. So this one here, we predicted it was gonna start in twenty twenty six, like it is. So in conclusion, this budget, it complies with the town's financial policies, including reserves and debt levels. We're going to the bond market late April for the fire station bond, and it will be credited by Moody's as a credit rating agency in early April. So we want to demonstrate strong reserves and strong adherence to our financial policies and practices. The concerning thing here again is that excess levy capacity is almost exhausted completely. And so FY twenty seventeen and beyond are likely to be challenging, involving Proposition Two and a Half overrides likely to be proposed and needed. So the budget is balanced within the confines of Proposition Two and a Half now in town policies. It maintains the town's core departmental services and missions. It funds OPEB. And again, this is one, one thing to highlight this as a somewhat success story for the town. The town's liability, OPEB liability is thirty six point six million. The town's trust fund currently has seven point three million in it. And here, I got some numbers written down. So of that seven point three million dollars, four and a half million of that came from the town. The rest of it was investment income. So it shows the power of the ability to put this money into the, we have that invested in the PRIT fund with the state. So the state retirement benefits trust, professional money managers, they have billions and billions of dollars under their control and professional money managers managing that money. So they're guaranteeing very high returns there. So again, four and a half million dollars of that seven point three million is contributions from the town, but the rest of it is investment income. Our budget also funds stabilization, and it funds the special purpose stabilization to begin saving for the impact of the firefighters, assuming we're keeping them on at the end of the three years. It funds the capital plant and minimizes debt. And that's the last slide.
Are there any questions at this point from the board? Not already been asked? Just to confirm, so the rate of increase from the previous year was eleven and a half percent? Tax rate increase?
Yes.
And the previous year was six point?
One six, yeah.
Appropriations committee, I know you've sat through this, you've learned this before, so this is all review for you. Any questions or anything you'd like to say this time?
Yeah, just to confirm a couple of things because there has been changes week on week. So some early departmental requests had requested additional staff. And so we're not incorporating those requests. So not incorporating the dispatcher and not incorporating a senior center.
I mean, when we're considering adding staff, I mean, again, an important part of this is sustainability. And it seems somewhat irresponsible to get to the point where we have a hundred seventy five thousand dollars of levy capacity and, or less. And that would, that's basically the cost of one employee. So if we brought it to zero, it's, what is the likelihood that the position would be sustainable in the future? And we asked for a level service budget request, and that's what, that's what we negotiated through with departments is putting together level services requests with no new staff.
Plus with new staff, it's insurance, and we don't know how that's gonna be next year. So it's just not financially prudent at this time.
I was trying to track through, you know, changes from like our last meeting. That was the one I came up.
We had more levy capacity at that point, I think.
We're looking at a drastically different thing. We're looking at drastically different picture with an eight percent health insurance increase and, you know.
I know at the last week's, I forget whether it was, I think it was the appropriations committee meeting you made mention that, I know the senior center requested an additional staff member incentive. They were looking at a model that might incorporate from WRTA funds or something like that. Where does that stand?
Right, well, we haven't had any formal discussion with them. But the, the impact there would be, there'd be some ability to add a position without taxpayer impact. And that would involve a proposal of gift funds that would phase in the project, phase in the employee. It would be similar to, there's a deal made years ago to add a library employee where it was phased in over a number of years where trust funds covered, that the employee was added. The trust funds paid, I think, the full amount one year. The next year, it was two thirds, the trust funds, the third year was one third trust funds, two thirds town. And then it eventually became a hundred percent the town's employee. So if there was a proposal that added ancillary funds in addition to potential balance that they have within their revolving funds, that's essential ability to create a position without taxpayer impact. But looking at the levy capacity, I mean, it just, we're almost exhausted.
Yeah, always in levy capacity, I think that's the right decision. But I just, I wanted to follow up because I thought that was an interesting idea of taking a look at revenue we get through the WRTA agreement. If there's excess money in that, that we don't need to fund that program, maybe we could fund something else from the senior center from within that. So it sounds like that's a discussion to be had. Do we know, I know the school is at two point nine nine percent increase. Do we know if they're adding any new staff members on their side?
A math teacher.
Yeah, I think they're, I don't know, I don't know how much, they cut some positions and added some. They were relatively neutral.
They were.
So on the order of one point five FTE for the math specialists and occupational therapy element. But there might have been movement in some of the school budgets since they presented that. So, but I think the math specialists, in fact, they were able to do it for a higher than three percent of the totals. It's pretty good. They were balancing through planned retirements and upfilling those retirements and then some, okay, two-ish, two point six, something like that, and further attrition. Okay, good. Lisa, I see your hand up.
Yes, I just, I wanna better understand, are we, are we on a hiring freeze? Are there two people that were going to be hired that are being on hold? And how many new employees have we brought in this year?
No, we ended up initially asking that each department to create their ideal budget, which is where a dispatcher was being requested, someone at the IT department, a position was being requested, and the senior center, customer service position. But given all of our information that came in through the budget process, we decided that we had to stay level service.
You had the same level, does that mean that you were capable of paying for those three people or not?
No, nope.
So they put it on hold?
Yes, yeah. These weren't positions that existed. It was just proposed.
And do, and do we have a number of how many new employees have come on board in the past six months?
There were, there were approved, Health and Human Services, that was through grant. And that course was safer grant, eight firefighters. I think, are you asking like what was approved at last? The last town meeting as far as positions?
Oh, I don't know about the approval. I was just trying to, you know, because you're seeing some new people coming, some other people going, some replacement people. Just assuming that is already in the budget. It's just a different person in the seat.
Right, that's correct.
But I think that when we had that summit, there was a couple of different requests. And you said the senior center being one, the police dispatcher being a second, and then a third one was IT.
IT.
Were they the only ones that actually asked around that summit time for those three?
I don't know about the summit, but for the budget process this year, yes, those were the only requested positions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Kelly, you've got your, your hand up. Fix what they said.
Yes, I was just gonna say, because you mentioned something about the schools. So we are actually have our, our public hearing tomorrow evening at six thirty. It's a Zoom meeting to approve, to reapprove the school budget, so.
This being a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience, in person or remote, that wishes to state anything, ask any questions? Otherwise, Suzie?
I need to hang on to the speakers. Jason, your presentation was so captivating. I need to ask a question. I'm not gonna repeat my address again. So I saw that the budget override could come in twenty twenty seven. Things are looking a little dire. Of course, as we all know by now, I'm a big proponent of education. How is this looking for the Peaslee project?
Well, the Peaslee project is gonna be part of our projections moving forward. Over the course of clearing up the ancient history, but August last year, at the summit, we were looking at how our debt policy of how much debt the town says that it wants to limit itself to having in total. The Peaslee project was fitting into those models. So this, this wouldn't change that because that would be proposed as a debt exclusion.
Okay.
Debt excluded project, like, like our financial policies say that any large building project would, will be a debt excluded project, meaning that it would be appropriated and then voted to be exempted from, voted at the ballot to be exempted from Proposition Two and a Half. So it would be tax impact either way. Taxpayers would have to fund the project. But that, that one does fit into the debt policy as we model it going forward on a long range.
All right, okay. I went to the law school because I didn't go to business.
Well, if that's when you use the hundred million dollar price tag, being reversed fifty percent by the state building authority.
Yeah, that project, yeah, okay. I just, I got a little nervous.
Yeah, I have a question for the Financial Planning Committee and the appropriations. So we're setting aside four hundred thousand dollars a year for the fire department stabilization fund. Yet, assuming that we're going to hire eight fire, fire people in the department. Under the safer grant for three years. But in three years, because we have this stabilization fund, where we can make the argument that they, we have the money to keep them on. Yet we're facing a two and a half override, seems like no one else is able to hire. How did, how do you reconcile that?
First of all, we've never, as a committee, voted to recommend that on a stabilization fund or not. So that's, that's one piece. It's in the, it's in their model, but we have not opined as to whether or not we believe that's a good financial decision or not.
Okay, okay. Has the other committee opined on that?
We don't do the operating budget, Julianne. We do the capital items. So we do not opine on it.
Yeah, so further discussion on that's gonna happen in our next meeting, August third. And so we've held, I guess, April. So we've, we've, that'll be where it comes before the committee for the recommendations on those articles. We've held up our vote on those articles pending public hearings like this and finishing some of the capital items of the financial planning. So we'll take that up as a committee on that. Going into the financial summit, right, that we are all at, looking at, rather than having a flatter operational budget for the fire department than a one point two million dollar spike, it made sense from a forecasting perspective to put aside another four hundred in year one, another four hundred in year two. So that by year three, another four hundred would get you up to that level. So that's the, the logic behind putting the stabilization fund, right, is it makes that spike. It removes that spike, right? We gradually ramp towards that. Getting the benefit of eight new firefighters now, but in a spending plan that was like getting three of them the first year and another three the second year and the final two. So we were able to have them sooner and get the benefit of them, but spread the cost of that across the years.
It's a concern, it's a concern we always have when we see staff increase based on grants. Because the grant doesn't work as, then, then all of a sudden you're in a position, well, do we up the budget or, you know, do we fire the person? We never wanna be in that position. So it's really concerning sometimes when we say, oh, we can, we can add staff and we've gotta pay for it for the first year. That, that just puts the day of revenue off. So, you know, it's something we'll watch for.
Oh, good, thank you.
It's hard to see where we'll be in three years too. If we're failing that crunch, if a firefighter decides to leave and take another position or they retire, then we could choose to not build that position. So we'll, we'll see sort of where we are at that point.
So my assumption was when the, when the grant was approved and it was voted on, there's a lot of presentations that were made around that. Their first, the, the presentation and came forward with the idea of applying for the grant, and that was voted and pushed forward. People looked at data and I think a, a, across multiple committees and boards, looking at that data said that we need these positions. And so if we need the positions now, my assumption is that we're building for a time when we're still gonna need the positions in three years. And so if we need the positions now, my assumption is that we're building for a time when we're still gonna need the positions in, in three years. And once we've had the benefit of, of them. So they, it, it was just a, a, a form of offering a solution to, to build toward the impact in, in three years.
No, I, I, I under, I understand the, the logic. It's just, you know, with the, the financial predictions at the federal level state, you know, we don't know what's going to be happening and, um, I just, you know, I, I think, I think to assure people that their, their positions are safe and other departments are, you know, would like a dispatcher and yet we can't afford it. I, I, I'm just curious about the, the rationale of, well, this, this department gets this and you, the, the rest of you have to hold out. So anyway. We'll see what you decide in here at the meeting.
Lisa, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, oh, okay. I, I kind of agree with, with Julianne in that, you know, at the time we were bringing this grant forward, we didn't discuss putting a stabilization fund together at the same time. And we were told that if in three years it didn't work out, it wasn't gonna be a problem, it wouldn't work out. We were gonna deal with it in three years. So it would have been better to at least have that also as part of the decision making, to know in advance that this was gonna be something that we were gonna do. Because, you know, everybody, there are other departments and they all need to have the same kind of security. But, um, but because we, you know, we don't even know what's gonna happen in three years, don't even, we were first told that safer grants were every, they were always available. And now, again, we don't know what's gonna happen economically. We don't know what's coming up down the road. So we're putting an extra, you know, extra money aside when there's other things that I guess we're going without for a future in three years that we're really not aware of what's gonna happen. So, um, so I, I, I have my concerns about that as well.
Yeah, I, in my recollections, we talked about that, um, that special stabilization fund from the very moment we began talking about safer grant, I think. Scott, you're nodding at me.
My, my recollection is the same of your meetings. Yeah, we talked about it again at the financial summit directly.
Yeah, um, and, you know, I think it, if we're going to have these employees under this grant, which we now do, they're now working for the town. You either fund it little bits and pieces so that you can help with the spike, or you have a spike. And that spike means in year four, you have, I don't know, a million dollars, one point one million dollars, whatever it works out to be for the salary and benefits for those eight firefighters, you have to hit one year. And you can imagine just a typically year adding eight people. Last year, I think we added like five or six.
Um, I think it's four and a half.
Four and a half. So you can imagine doubling what the impact of last year in year four. Um, that is, you know, would be a big true shock to the system. So I, I think the stabilization fund, um, it, they are here now is the best way to do that. If we, you know, if in, in year four, we make a different decision that we're in a financial condition where we cannot sustain uh, that, we then have at that point a million dollars or whatever it is in that specialist stabilization account that we can use for something else. The only question I have about that, we're funding that from within a levy limit and not from free cash.
No, it's, it's coming from free cash.
Okay.
We'd have to go to town on any purpose.
We, correct, yeah, I mean.
And again, to be clear, okay, we would not have had the money in the levy capacity to fund that.
Okay, okay.
So the other question then is, we also have new people of Health and Human Services in on a grant. Are we going to put a stabilization fund together for them?
That's a, a much longer period grant.
Yeah, and for a smaller number of people. Uh, so it's not, it's not that type of million dollar spike in one year. And a lot of those Health and Human Services are, have, have traditionally been just grant after grant, after grant, after grant. And we, you know, don't have an expectation that that's gonna end with a safer grant. I, I know your hand's up, I just wanna make sure we conclude that piece of it.
Well, you're still, you're still going through the fact that they may not be granted anymore. So then you, and there's, how many people are in that at this point?
But we, past experiences that we, they will continue to be supported by the grant, we know with certainty the safer grant will end after year three. So it's best to make decisions based on the facts as best not to worry about, you know, what ifs that have no, um, no expectation become.
Well, just not as impactful as the eight firefighters. We would be able to put those positions in the budget, hopefully, if the grant weren't to expire.
Or the other part of the nature of that work is those grants are for particular services. So it is a much easier decision just to say we will no longer have those particular services that were covered by the grant. So that's an easier.
Right.
That's an easier situation than letting go public safety or public works or educational staff. So that's, it's much easier to get out of that providing that service that it provides by the Health and Human Services grants. Like. Yeah, no, I mean, I, I, I get the concern that we're taking hard choices with staff down the road. I think it's a stabilization fund that give us some options that we wouldn't have down the road for, for, um, for possible harder, harder choices. Um, and then Jason, can a stabilization fund be invested differently than general funds? So you could have this in a higher interest bearing investment?
Well, yes, that, that would be one of the benefits, but also it's the, the threshold to appropriate money out of it. It's, it's a higher threshold, so two thirds rather than a half. So like, it's generally looked at as, as a stronger saving tool, more like a savings account than a checking account. But yes, it, that is true, that you can give, um, the ability to invest it more, more investment choices.
Right, so making those deposits now to be spent later would, you could have more um, investment gains than just using general funds or whatever at year four to cover that.
We can't put it in the state benefit trust, but we can, we can invest it more aggressively than traditional municipal funds.
Jason, could you go back to the slide that showed the, you know, average home, the, the home value, the uh, total, the one that had the totals on it, including the uh, uh, the tax, reported tax income, et cetera. And, you know, that, where we calculated out the uh, tax burden. Yeah, this one, whoop. No.
Sorry, this one?
There it is, yeah. Uh, no, no, it was a table. There we go. Alright, so the income went from one billion to, let's say, one point two billion of reported taxable income. Uh, and then basically what we did is we divided by the number of residents and we said that's the average income.
Well, that's how the state did it.
That's how the.
That's how the state calculated, yes.
Um, is it possible to, when we're talking about the tax burden kind of thing? Uh, not, no one, not, not everyone in town saw an eighteen percent increase in their income last year. And the, you know, the median income of, of, and the average earner in town is a lot lower than the average. So when you say, you know, if you calculate the tax burden based on the average total income of the town, uh, there are a lot of people, here's the concern. Taxes for individual residents is gonna go up a thousand bucks. The, the average is, oh, what, eleven percent? Uh, that is going to hurt a lot of people a lot more. And, you know, and again, and then, so this, everyone's gonna feel that this year. And then what are we looking at for next year? Uh, there's a point where the, it, it's gonna be hard for, for us to do this with, you know, with the average resident in town or, you know, can, can manage. And I'm, one of the things we're concerned about is this is going to get painful and we may be at a point where we need to say we need to go in for an override and people are gonna say enough's enough. I can't, I can't maintain this. One of the problems with average home value creeping up and it's great and you can say I'm wealthier because my home value doubled, but I gotta live someplace. And if I sell this home, I'm probably gonna move into a home that's gonna cost as much anyway. So that's really not helping the average homeowner a, a, a lot of times. So I just think we need, I'm concerned about not just this year, but next year and the year after, uh, that we're headed toward a point where we're gonna have to actually look at cutting services. So I ju, I just wanted to raise that, I mean, it's.
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
It's a real concern.
Yeah, yeah. And we've discussed that in our, in our meetings, uh, throughout this entire budgetary process. Um, you know, I think having a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of excess levy capacity is exceptionally harmful.
Near zero.
Yeah, and, and, and what, and, and we don't have a clear plan as to what in twenty-seven you're gonna put on the ballot to have a yes or no vote on services.
That's in my, that's in my notes.
I would, I would certainly be looking. Our job is to provide an opinion to town meeting. Um, and we have not as a group taken in votes, et cetera. But the course of discussions, in my view, is that we should, the, the, the management of town should be thinking more about creating more excess capacity at the end of, in this budget process as opposed to waiting for twenty-seven for Armageddon. And there's different things that we should do, in my opinion, relative to increasing our, our tax, our tax levy limit uh, or the, or the, the excess capacity. Among the things, I'm not sure that using all of that free cash for the, the stabilization fund for firefighters is necessarily the best financial use of the money. We do have room in the stabilization funds, et cetera, to be able to apply a little bit more than our normal five hundred thousand against operating expenses. We do have six hundred thousand dollars solid waste subsidy that we have to make. We haven't changed the price look back in twenty-five years. And honestly, when, when I asked the question and I, and, and the answer, when, when we looked at the price of those, you know, four or five years ago, this is six hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we're not looking at. Um, we have seventeen million dollars in town departmental expenses. I'm sorry, there's gotta be one to two percent in there somewhere. There just has to be. And every budget item makes sense. You can look at anything and say, this makes total sense. But at some point, you can't afford it. So what hard decisions do you want to make this year versus make decisions next year? Because next year gets a lot harder. Um, if you can create one point two million or so of, of uh, excess levy capacity this year through the budget process, you have a shot at, if you can keep expenses at the two to three percent level, which is gonna be hard and still require sacrifices, maybe you could push off an override for another year, maybe. Um, I, I just think that needs to be a model, be thought of, and from a policy perspective, you guys ought to weigh in on some of those things as you make your deliberations about more articles, et cetera. But. Retired now, but thirty years in corporate America. I would say at least five or six times that we're, comes down from the top, we don't have the money, cut two percent out of your budget. They don't tell you how to do it, but it's just drop two percent. Have we thought about that as a town and saying, we're looking at eleven percent? Have we thought about asking all departments, say, look, you manage, you manage your budget, but your budget is two percent less than.
We did.
Advance.
Yeah.
Well, you settled on eleven percent. You know, generally when we get that everything, it's because, hey, the corporation says, hey, our revenues are this. We're not going to, you know, we're not going to up our prices, et cetera. So therefore, we have to have our costs meet our revenues. And it's, it's done that way rather than just saying, hey, these are our, these are the expenses we want, now we have to find the money for it. And I'm just asking the question, is it, is that reasonable to do?
It is reasonable and we did go through that exercise and it would have considerable effects on the departments, which.
Okay, I, I agree. And again, it had considerable effects on me when I was.
Will be up to the taxpayers on what they would like for resources in their community.
So last year, when we were at this stage, um, I know I said, and other people may have as well, we need to start on our budget a lot earlier, um, so that the board can start to weigh in earlier.
Yeah.
On pro and con, you know, do our job. Because our, our job should not be looking at a finished budget and saying yes. Our, but our job should be looking at progress along the way and making priority decisions. And saying, yes, we wanna eat up the living capacity, no, we don't, and everything in between. Um, then our town administrator went and quit on us in the early part of fall. And um, Stephanie joined us luckily very shortly thereafter. And we're, we're, unfortunately are where we are. Um, I wanted to be, I wanted to basically have this, not about the formal public, public hearing, but a review of the, the guts of the budget a lot earlier. And I know I was bugging you about this, um, probably in December.
And that's when, in the first few months and I was meeting.
You were just starting. So, so that's not, that's not against you, that's just, just ended up this way.
Yeah.
And um, I, I will make a statement now, I don't know if I'll be lucky enough to, to be here next year, we'll find out next month. But um, either way, this board needs to get started on the budget much, much earlier, I think.
Well, yeah.
I think, I think, I think that a draft, a draft budget needs to be in place, probably September or October. Understand, so that we know where that is and then this board can start to make the decisions then as far as what's gonna go into the override category, which means a potential cut if the override fails. What's, we have to stay in no matter what, you know, if anything just gets cut. And that, that is a hard job of this board, that this board has not had to consider. Um, but actually, I mean, you know, we're hearing from you, an override is probably gonna be in, in the works. An override means we wanna keep all the services.
And, and we're not, yeah, of course, we're going to try to not have an override, but, but uh, it's just, we want to be transparent, we want to have everybody on the same page of what we're looking at. And like, um, his model shows, were the projections where exactly where we were projected to be.
Yes, so a, a, again, the, the policy decision was to create a level seven services budget. So to make, cutting, uh, you know, some, some amount that would achieve a, a budgetary savings would come with, with some appetite for cuts. So if there's an appetite for, for trenchment, I mean, that's, that's a policy position that we can take and, and, and approach that.
Yeah, and next year's probably, you know, budget direction might be lev, level service or a three percent cut or stay with the levy limit, you know, something like that. I'm not suggesting that that's what they would be, but we can start with that process. Um, but I think that, that needs to happen very early. Susan, I see your hand, I'll get to you in just a second. Um, that needs to start really, really early. We know next year's budget is going to be the hardest budget that this town has had since probably most or all of us have been involved in the process. I know you were involved a number of years ago, you may remember some of those.
Sure, we went, Susan, tell you, we went over, right?
Yeah.
Didn't go well.
Right, right. And I, you know, I, I've been through some of those discussions when I was involved in another town and it's, it's a, it's an unpleasant discussion. This town has been in the enviable position and the rare position of being millions under the levy limit for a long time. And it's, it's catching up with everybody. As Jason said, there are towns very near us that are looking at exceptionally high overrides and have, have had to have passed them in recent years as well. So, um, you know, it's.
But in a lot of things, of course, it's, it's a budget and it's projecting. There's so many costs that we don't know until last minute, like for instance, our health insurance numbers, our retirement costs, um, yeah, yeah, school numbers that they're waiting on. So we ballpark it as best as we can.
Yep.
But there's always going to be last minute changes, like, you know, state aid. Um, again, it's, there will be changes up until the end.
Always, always. But, you know, if we, if we're starting this in September, we make our best guesses for what things will look like in September and we make decisions. And then we take a look at it again in November and we update those decisions so that everybody, the public, staff and everybody knows the way that it's going. I can't predict what it'll look like, I have no idea, but, um, but I, I, I do not wanna wait until February or March or April next year to start having those discussions because they're, they're bigger, they're bigger than they need to be. Susan, if you could do me a favor and go to any of the mic.
Oh, sure.
People in the room. You're welcome to go.
Oh. Um.
Yes, I believe you should bring the timeline much, much closer to fall. Back when we were doing this, back when I first did this, we were meeting in October. Once you get your free cash certified, certainly the capital, people can start to look at it. But that's not what I really wanted to talk to you about right now. I think when the departments came before us. We actually found a couple of departments that were willing to take a second look and make some changes downwards for the requests. And save us some money. Wanted to actually give a shout out to the police chief.
Yeah.
He was amazing. He has, he had wanted originally three vehicles this year. He said he would push his cycle back, and he would, he would ask for three next year and only two this year. But on top of that, he's taking a look at his maintenance program. He's going to extend the maintenance and the warranties, the cycling of, of their, their vehicles. From four years to five years. I think there's room to still talk to departments about making some changes. And bringing some money down. Harry's got a great idea here about the trash. I mean, I think somebody should really listen to that. The people in the towns, at town meeting, don't really wanna be compared to another town. They just look at their dollars bills, in their tax bill. They don't care if we're mid-range, doing better than most. They care what they're asking to be paid.
Yeah. And that's kind of what, again, that's kind of what I'm concerned about. If we look at what, say, the homeowner in Northborough. Who is basically kind of at the median salary, median income of the town, and what the impact is. Because, you know, we're sitting here and saying, okay, well, we can ask for an override, or we can kind of eat our levy capacity, et cetera, et cetera. And he can't, he can, that homeowner can say, well, I'm gonna go ask my boss for a raise, and, you know, the answer's probably no. And so he's gotta figure out, what do I, you know, these people are gonna have to make cuts to their home budget. That may be painful in order to, you know, kind of, they've gotta get the, the money for the increase in taxes from somewhere. So I'm just saying, we need to kind of keep that in mind, and uh, you know, I understand the purpose of the, the calculations on here. But it was just, we have quite a range of incomes in our town. And we need to think about kind of the people that are down at, you know, the lower half of the range, that range of incomes. And how they're gonna cope with this, because their houses are going up in value and their taxes are going up. And like I said, it's, they have to live somewhere, so it's. You know, I just wanna make sure that we, we're in, we're in the same boat with them from the standpoint of how we. And it, there may be some real tough choices, you know, do we need, do we get more policemen? Do we introduce a strengths program in the school program? Do we add eight firefighters? You know, there's, and we may have to say we can't do all of that, but we're gonna have to wait though. And those are the tough choices that are coming at us, and we're gonna be forced to make them.
Yeah.
I wish we had been a little bit more proactive this year and stepped up to that earlier, because now we're at the eleventh hour.
Well, we did not, of course, go with any new positions, so.
Oh, yeah.
That came from departments, and, and I think the positions were warranted, but of course, just like you said, we had to step back and say. Let's look at the whole picture.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I think going back, but I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, we, we did start this process, I mean, I, I put a, a milestone in there in August. We were looking at projections that basically told us where we were gonna be if we pursued this. Policy of level service budgets, and, you know, the, the, the idea of retrenchment. Or, or cutting budgets was, wasn't raised at, at the time. So a, again, there's appetite for that, I mean, that's a, a, a policy position we can take and, and pursue. But um, that's my, that's my point, and, and, and to the point about this, we, we are sensitive to that. I mean, I'm, the, the intention of this is just to present data and look at data and metrics. And, and see what we have available to us to look at, in, in terms of regional effects, what's going on in the state. We can't fix what's going on in the state in terms of affordability of, of, of homes. Not here alone, but we can look at it, and we can look at the data, and this is, you know, basically, we looked at it last year. And we're comparing it and updating it, looking at it again this year, and it's not meant to be insensitive to anybody's needs, as I, I know that.
I'm not saying it is.
I know that there's, how averages work, you know, in Southborough, there's probably people that are struggling with their tax bills as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, they have their per capita, it's double what Northborough's is, or, or so to speak. But that could be, there's ten people that make billions of dollars, and, you know, everybody else is similar demographics to Northborough's people. So I would suggest we start again with, continue with the projections in, in August. As much as it pained me and was a bad time of year to try to make predictions at, at that time of year, when you're not, your books aren't closed. But we should continue to look at this stuff, and we, we did start in August.
Yeah.
Um so, yeah.
I just wanna say thank you, all of you. This has been a, I think, a very healthy discussion that had to happen, or to start. But um my question is, and I don't know who wants to answer this. What, if you had to pick a number to stay under the levy limit, what would that amount of money be? A million, two million?
Well, I mean, in terms of levy limits and staying under it, the whole point of having it is so that you can access it. If you need, if you need it, and move it onto departmental budgets. So we accessed two point four million dollars of that this year to produce, to, to produce the balanced budget. So would we need to keep two point four million dollars? Because we have the two point four million dollar gap next year as well.
Oh.
So it, it, it's not an easy question to answer.
Um, I'm sorry.
But, but, but if I may, the, the, the real question is. How much do you think you need to spend in fiscal twenty-seven for a certain level of services, right?
Uh-huh.
And then you just walk backwards as to, well, how much of an increase is that in taxes, right? So if you, if you want to say, everybody can go up uh two and a half, uh three percent, okay? Then you're gonna be fine, as long as no costs are, are over three percent. Because you've got your two and a half percent increase in the levy limit built in, plus new growth, which is about a half a percent. So you got about um three percent to play with, to avoid an override. With health insurance, with, with retirement, that's not gonna happen, per se, without cutting services. So then the question is, how much would, theoretically, how much would you have to cut this year, right? To allow for the growth in health insurance, pension obligations, and, and standard stuff, right? You know, honestly, I think if you were between one and one point five million. Of levy limit capacity left at the end of fiscal, right now, you'd have a shot. You'd have a shot.
And to do that, we'd have to cut.
You'd have to.
Cut a million, million and a half.
Right, but you could do it via, you could do it via, use a little bit more free cash, which we don't like to do, but our budgets. We've always used like five hundred thousand historically, but our budgets have increased dramatically. So you could get away with, still be within the, the, the financial parameters of the stabilization funds, of, of the, of the ratios. So you could increase that from five to eight, and I would take that frankly from the safer reserve. Just, that's, you're gonna have to kick the can in something, kick it there. Um we, you should, we should project more revenue from the solid waste sale of trash bags. Um and then we should look at some, some costs uh throughout the organizations. Now, I, I hate to hear that we're not hiring the dispatcher. I, I don't know what we traded off for that, whether it was higher health insurance rates or whatever. But the fact that, that we're gonna, we're not giving the chief that dispatcher kind of really aggravates me. Um es- especially given the fact that you know he needs, he's shorthanded anyways. And the most important thing the town can do is public safety. Public safety, then the kids, then the roads. Water and sewer, we take care of for the enterprise funds. But I, I don't know what the trade-off was in that, but it just, it, it concerned me when I heard that tonight, that we're not hiring the dispatcher. Because those are the hard, those are the trade-offs, right? So we made a trade-off already, a dispatcher versus something else. I don't know what the hell it was, but it seems to me that it better be a doggone good thing that's more important, so.
I'm gonna, uh Lisa, I see your hand up, I'm gonna suggest we maybe try to wind down.
Yeah.
The public hearing. This is a great discussion. We should meet with you soon, um soon after town meeting and begin that process. Um and uh, and, and get to a better place, at least. Understanding wise, by next year, it might not be a better place financially, um but Lisa?
Yes, I, I, I am glad we are having this discussion. Um I wish we had this discussion last year before town meeting, when we weren't really talking about any of those. But my concern, and I'm gonna say it now, is that we are in a position that is very tenuous. We wanna be able to offer TIFs to, to three different projects. Where is that money gonna come from? And I don't know what we have an amount that we can, that we can even play with to understand how much of that money we can offer. So before that gets settled, I think that, that there should be a long discussion between that and the appropriations committee. To find out what the, what the benefits and the, um, the merits are on that are. Thank you.
Um with the hope of winding this down, again, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have any last comments? Before we close this out, either in person or remotely?
I mean, I, I mean, to, to Jason's point earlier, maybe it was a mic drop that bounced, but this was gone over in August. And I think, to your point, what really kind of stumbled things was the fact that we needed to go out and hire a town administrator. Um so I think some disruptions, um I'm obviously glad that face here, but um. I think those disruptive, disruptions kind of stumbled us, and kind of maybe took eyes off the ball a little bit, or we'll be kind of knew it was there. But I don't know if there's going on, so um I think re-dedication to that and some stability in staff and town leadership. Will benefit us hopefully going into these things going forward, but.
Um, all right, with that, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to close the joint public hearing with the appropriations committee.
Um any further discussion on closing the hearing? Uh, Julianne?
I.
Mike?
I.
Lisa?
I.
Laura?
I.
I also vote aye, voted unanimously in favor. Public hearing is closed. Do you want to adjourn?
Yeah, can I take a motion to adjourn in a brief? Or do we have, yeah, since I called the word, do I do it, need to do it separately? We go all at once?
Uh we, we have more stuff to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yes. We, uh, we adjourn as the appropriate second.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, George. Uh, this is a real call vote, Terry.
I.
George.
I.
Scott.
Or Tim.
I.
And Scott is an I, we already adjourned. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did a full call vote, so they're closing the hearing?
I don't get it.
Yeah, yeah, it was. Um, okay, uh, next up, discussion regarding town meeting process. It says town administrator, uh town moderator. Yeah, absolutely. Let's take a five-minute break, uh, call recess for five minutes. Good idea.
Thank you.
That person will be sent back to the regular audience by the phone. Sometimes they won't. There's been some inconsistency with that. I think, I think it's important to again, set the rules are, what the rules are. And I think traditionally it is the person that makes the motion and for an article and anyone they bring up to support that article. It's appropriate at the podium and other people with individual input and comments and so forth or not. I can certainly make the argument if someone makes a motion to amend an article, once that's been made and seconded, they can go to the podium. If, you know, I would say, yeah, at that point they can go to the podium, but I'll let Fred figure that out, but some, some enforcement rules. Um, so that
So that's a little bit, um, years ago, because I've been going to town meeting for quite some time. The moderator had told me on several occasions that he chooses who can go to which podium, to the podium. Or he decides it doesn't matter. He said, anybody at any, can come to any microphone. But that changes from year to year and, and from, I, I don't know why. But there have been times where um, I've seen that happen. So whether or not you want to set, do a set of rules, which I assume has to go into the moderator's decision to set those up and put them in advance. And again, put that in the booklet. If you're trying to do something to that effect, because there's a lot of questions that night and things happen. And I, I, I don't want to see what happened in special time, it can happen again.
Yeah, I mean, it obviously is a hundred percent under the moderator's control and per view, um, he can decide anyone can use any microphone. He can decide that certain microphones for certain purposes. Um, you can decide that people can just yell out anytime from the back of the meeting and, you know, but setting, setting the expectations and following those through is is the most important. Everyone knows what they are, so there's no confusion. Sometimes there has been confusion. Um, and then the last one is more for us to discuss, particularly, I think at both of the last two town meetings, the annual and particularly the special, there was some question amongst us. Um, if one of us had a comment or a question that may be not consistent with the board vote, how do we do that? And I think Julianne, you had, you had one, I think it was in the fire station question, you went into the audience? But if I'm remembering that, somebody did.
I didn't remember to have an audience.
Up to the podium. Okay, so the podium, um, you know, I think I, the ideal world, once we vote on something, we vote as a body. And then that ends, in theory, ends our participation in that question. And our job is to represent the will of this body when we go to town meeting. I, there's no legal restriction to that. It's, that's a
It's a new tradition.
Both ways.
Yeah.
But I, I think it does give a better look if you go to the podium and say, you know, I'm speaking as a resident.
Or, or the audience microphone.
Oh, the audience microphone, correct, yeah.
And I, I
If you remove yourself from the table.
Yeah, to make it, that makes it clear you are not speaking on behalf of the board. So if, for example, you know, we vote three to two to support some article and that means the position of the select board is to, is that article should pass. And if you might are one of the two that voted in the minority and you want to express that concern, um, I don't think you should be prohibited from doing that, but I think it is confusing to the audience if that's done from the table at which we sit at the front of the audience. But go to an audience mic, I'm speaking as an individual, not on behalf of the board, because I was in the minority in a vote and then make, and then make your case. Um, that's a, a way to do it.
So I, I remember the, this incident clearly. Uh, a person in the audience, and I really should have thanked him for asking the question because I thought it was important, asked specifically the people who were voting, who had voted against the fire station, said, I want to hear from those members of the financial committee in this luck board, why they, why they voted no. So it was different than me just saying, well, you know, should I go and express my views? We were asked directly.
And I think that's well, I mean, yeah, my take is that would be okay to answer from the table because that's the expectation there. I, you know, I, I, I want to just, I want to understand as a group what we're doing.
I mean, I, I think to make it whether you're for or against the article, however you voted, it would just make the most sense to just go down to the audience mic. Right? Because as, as you kind of said before, facing the audience is the town and all the boards and committees have made decisions, maybe obviously not all majority, but have made decisions and have decided to present this to the body of town meeting. So I think speaking and presenting is one from this direction makes sense. And then whether you want to be for something or against something, you are speaking as yourself then. You, you took your experience and your opinions and your thoughts and your um, review of the facts and made a decision, yes or yea or nay on a vote. And then no issue going down to explain that, but I think that should take place at the citizen level microphone, not the microphone facing the other way as, as coming from the town.
But if the person, if the question is directly, why did you as a board member go this way? It's a little bit different than, well, as a resident, I feel.
I, no, I, I actually, I agree. I think that's a, that's a different statement. Rather than advocating, if you're advocating for a position, particularly a position that's different than how the board voted, that's audience mic. If you are answering a question.
Right.
And, and that's, you know, I felt this was too expensive or, um, I wanted this to be red instead of green or I thought this should, you know, that's a, you can probably answer that in a few words.
Uh huh.
Um, I, I, my, my take and what we decide as a group is what we do. Um, is that, if we get that kind of a question, I think that's okay to answer from the seat.
Well, I don't, I totally agree with Julianne. I mean, we were specifically asked. Specifically not, not allowed. You can't do that. It was a big to do about that. That was it wasn't matter what microphone it was from, we should, we were asked. Our job is to represent what the people want and we should do what they ask us. And I don't think that should happen again.
Yeah, I mean, there was clearly some confusion about that. Um, so I, I, I think I'm seeing agreement that if we're advocating, then we go to the audience mic.
Mm hmm.
If we are answering briefly as to, if we get that kind of question again, then I, I think it's okay to just go down the road of you know.
Laura hasn't really commented.
Laura, did you have any, anything you wanted to add to this?
No.
Okay, good. All right. So are we, are we pretty good with that? Okay, um, those were the five items that I wanted to have um, a discussion on. I think that helps us prepare for town meeting.
Um, one, one additional question. So like we brought in a little clickers to make voting faster and more efficient. Um, I know in town meetings, the special one where as a board member sitting up there and then also others being in the audience, sometimes the time limit assigned to each person varies. Um, where some people are allowed to go on and on and others are cut short. Um, I can't really tell rhyme or reason, but I didn't know if there was ever an appetite, maybe not for this one coming up, depending on timing, but for something more rigid where, you know, maybe not a horn, but you know, something like a ding or, you know, just something so that everyone is sort of known, like because sometimes people get going and they lose track of time, just so that they are aware that, hey, you're, you're at time. Trying, trying to be more, you know, just to be respectful to everybody else who wants to chime in.
Yeah, I don't intend it. Because we, where we face, we, we can't see the desk on the stage where Andy is at, India and Karen are at. Do they hold, I don't know if you remember, they hold a thing that like they flip something to orange and then they flip something to red. I've seen that at other town meetings.
Can the moderator see it though? Because the moderator could just cut someone off.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but some warning that says, hey, you know, you've used two and a half of your three minutes or whatever it happens to be, it turn, you know, they, something turns red.
I'm saying maybe something on a screen, like a screen.
Could be on, could be on this presidential way to do it.
Debates have all kinds of different ways.
Problem, yeah.
Inevitable.
I don't know, you know.
Right. Yeah, I think something would be helpful. I don't.
And if it's just the moderator just trying to enforce it more.
Yeah.
You know, just saying like, hey, in practice, this is kind of a little varied.
Yeah, I, I agree. It has been, um, inconsistent.
Yes.
I, I would guess that somebody else would be the timekeeper.
It's the deputy moderator.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, he's got his little watch there.
Oh, okay. Okay, so some, some way that that can be alerted to the, to the speaker without interruption and then obviously to the moderator. Um, be good to come up with something.
Tequila.
No, I'm not going to.
If it goes late. All right. Did anyone else? Did anyone have anything else on the, the town meeting, on town meeting process in general?
Um, just, just a quick question. The, the, the data and everything of town meeting is set by our bylaws.
Correct.
Okay. So if we ever wanted to make an adjustment to say have weekend town meetings, things like that, that's a bylaw adjustment.
Correct. We can go like Westboro from eight AM to eight PM, something like that. I'm not saying we do that, but they, they, yeah, every town has its, its thing. But yes, yeah, town meeting bylaws describe that. Um, hearing nothing else on this item, we will move along to final approval of town administrator review process and evaluation form. I think we have everything we need to close this out. Stephanie, thank you very much for putting, for adding in the goals
Oh, yeah.
that we had approved back a few months ago. I think we've got a form that is really good and a process that is really good. It's, you know, been updated the way that we all wanted it to be. I, I think it's, it's good for our first review process. Um, the only thing that Stephanie and I did talk about were the dates that, um, yeah, the contract says that we do the whole thing by the end of April. What had talked about a couple of meetings ago is we would turn them in and say, here's a review during that 15 minute meeting that we have just before a town meeting and then discuss it a week or, you know, at the next meeting after that, which I think be the 12th of this year. Um, I thought maybe that's a little awkward to do in that quick 15 minute meeting that it's, if it's okay with, with you and okay with us, we can still have the, we could still have the discussion on the 12th.
Mm hmm.
Um, but the
A stroke to May.
But, but say it's okay, but, but set the deadline for submitting them to, you know, a few days after town meeting.
What do you mean discussion on the 12?
So
April 12?
So May 12th.
May 12?
May 12th, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Meeting date.
All right.
Um, so that's the date that we would actually discuss the review.
Okay.
Um, and technically, technically in a formal sense, that's an amendment to the contract. We, because this year there's no financial, you know, impact to the review process. We, I verbally is fine with me. If we're all good with that, then we'll work on this, you know, the technical specifics of the exact date and process and everything else. That make sense to everyone?
Yes.
Um, uh, Elisa, I'll ask you a question. Um, do you want to participate in the review process this year, at least by submitting something?
Then I ask you the same question.
Okay.
So, um, I think it would be when do you need it by? Well, hmm, what happens, you know, on March 31st, I'm done. Technically.
That's, that's really, you know, if, if you would technically, you would not, obviously you wouldn't be a board member at that point. So technically we could say, no, you're not participating in the review, but you've, you've been part of this board for, for all but, you know, a few weeks.
Since Steph has.
Of the full year. So, um, I
All right. I would, I would like to.
Okay.
Um, I will have to, um, I will have to get some stuff done very quickly because I'm going to Ireland tomorrow night.
Oh, have fun.
Okay. Um, so you don't, you don't have to do it before the 31st. I, I am you, you know, if anyone objects, say so. But I'm okay accepting it from Lisa, making it part of the average and everything else and you know, basically considering, considering her, uh, you know, a board member emeritus um, for that process so that we can have five board members participate in the review. And it would be do, you know, whatever the date is, you know, very beginning of May, that everyone submits it for consolidation. That would be the same date that Lisa would submit it. And then Laura and I will get together and put them all together of all five of us.
Okay, so when do you want them?
Um,
And we can use this copy here? Does it have in our packet?
Okay. Um, let's see, town meeting is May 28th.
No, April.
April 20, yeah, April, but I wouldn't get May, but it's the other, the 28th off the top. Um, how about, uh, Friday, the second, Friday, May 2nd?
Okay. Okay.
Everyone submits those to Laura and I. And then we would work weekend or the early part of the week of the fifth to put that together and then get the consolidated review to Stephanie in advance of the packet. So, you know, no later than Thursday, the 8th.
Okay, I have a math question that's turning my head.
Okay.
Let's say I write not applicable for three categories.
Okay.
And you do it for one and you do it for four. Is that going to change the whole math? Something skewed to?
What, what we, no, well, what we've decided that NA doesn't count at all. So, so you remove that one from the equation. So if let's say you put an NA on something and the other four of us give it a grade.
Yeah.
Then we are adding these four and dividing by four.
Okay, okay. Good.
Yeah. So NA doesn't count as anything. It's just, it's like a no up. Sorry.
Well, well, we decided that it would reduce.
Yeah, it would reduce the divisor.
Yeah, but no, what are you saying?
So if so what we had decided for the individual questions is if there are five to a category and someone puts an NA on one of the categories.
Yeah.
The average for that category is determined by dividing the total score by four instead of by five.
Correct.
Yeah. So we would do the same exact thing when we averaged together.
Right. So, yeah.
Yeah, the members' scores.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Does everyone, anyone have any other questions or comments on the review form? Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the town administrator annual review process and evaluation form as presented.
Okay, motion made by Laura, signed by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor, uh, Laura?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote as unanimous in favor. Again, we've set those dates. We've agreed that, that Lisa, if she wants to, can, uh, can participate by submitting the reviews um, to us and you're, and you're good with the dates. So that is that. Hey, we've got reports next. Um, Lisa, by any chance, do you have any reports for us tonight?
I do, but why don't you make me last? We're next to last.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Uh, Laura, any reports tonight?
Just a couple of quick ones. I attended the Greater Boroughs Muslim. I just forgot, I goofed up the name. I'm so sorry. Um, they hosted an IFtar, an inter um, faith IFtar celebration. I just wanted to extend my appreciation to them for all that they're doing to answer questions and share their celebrations with the community. And I also wanted to congratulate the, congratulate the Junior Women's Club on their 50th anniversary. They've done a lot of great work, uh, in the community. And one of the things that I really love that they do is that they come up with ideas and they they rally a lot of other groups in town to help see them to fruition. So they, they spearheaded the soccer field on 135. Uh, many, many years ago, they put the sunscreen, uh, dispensers at 135. They founded the food pantry. They host the STEM conference for girls every year. And they've just got so many events that they do and they are celebrating their 50th anniversary. So I just wanted to extend my, my well wishes to them. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much. Mike, any reports?
Uh, no reports.
Okay. Yeah, any reports?
You have some on my report. Um, but the first thing I'll say is that I attended the quarterly CMRPC meeting, which was about establishing a fund for municipal buildings that we've talked about, that we're going to talk to our legislators about and was quite an affirming meeting. I, I think I can safely say unanimously, every town wants something like this to happen. We're, we're all in the same position. Lot of, lot of need for buildings, building repairs. So that was, that was interesting. And um, the Historic District Commission, um, requested that, that we make sure that everyone knows that they are invited to the exhibit of the Witness Houses. These are the houses in town that were here during the Revolutionary War. And I think there's 21 of them. And there will be a presentation on
Saturday, April 19th.
Thank you very much.
Noon. I will hopefully scroll through this really nice looking invitation.
Yes.
Is my house on there?
I don't know.
Well, if the White Cliffs was.
No, I don't think yours is that old, is it?
The same age as the White Cliffs.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is
Revolutionary War.
Yeah.
That looks like one of our pictures.
In addition, they are, um, they are doing a re, a reenactment on May 3rd. So mark that in your calendars too. And I had asked about this at the last time. Is there any way these, um, Revolution 250 events can be on the homepage? They're coming up quickly and
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's, that's very good.
Okay. Lisa, do you want to go before me or after me?
Um, hmm, I'll go after you.
Um, just a couple of things tonight, um, I will, I'll, I'll use one of the same ones that I used last time is Friday, April 4th, which is coming up pretty soon at 7:00 PM. Is the, uh, Northborough Education Foundation Trivia Night at Sabrina Keys. Please go to northborough.org, um, to buy a seat or a table. Um, someone familiar, maybe the, um, the MC of that event, maybe someone whose initials are MC. Um, I also attended, uh, the IFtar event at the, uh, Westboro Islamic Center, um, and with Laura and Representative Donnie was there, Senator Robin Kennedy was there, um, an aide to, uh, oh, uh, Senator Eldridge, who used to, of course, represent, uh, Northborough was there, um, and aide to, and Marty was there. Um, and, and a lot, a lot of other people from Northborough that we knew, some that we didn't uh, and from the area. I think Laura and I both had a, a really good time um, at that, very educational, really good food. Um, the library had, um, our judicial outreach month event that I mentioned at our last meeting. Um, and it was really, really interesting. Uh, I wish turnout, I wish turnout had been more, but we had a state appeals judge that came to give a short presentation and then answer questions about, just about anything. It was anything from obscure legal topics to, uh, questions about, you know, for students to go to law school. There was just one or two students there, high school students, um, and everything else. I, of course, asked um, a question that would apply to us. And that was, what we've talked about is when we do meeting minutes or videos, um, how often are they used in the court process? And the answer is just about never. Um, that it's, you know, the record that you create. So the letter that you write or the permit that you grant, that piece of paper is usually the thing that unless, unless the meeting minutes are actually a concrete part of the case, such as if it's an open meeting law violation that you know, specifically refers to meeting minutes, then, uh, meeting minutes aren't used. Still important to do, but, um, you know, I, I, I thought that was interesting. I think we had received roughly the same kind of feedback from town council, but it was good to get that from a judge also. Um, he was almost surprised by the question. I think he just never, he obviously has done a lot of municipal law. Um, I also asked a question about how we can best probably more for land use boards, how we can best, um, prepare in advance of a case when we're actually working on the thing, you know, when we're hearing, when the zoning board might be hearing an appeal, when we might be considering a license that could potentially be appealed, our decision could be appealed and that's establish the written record as accurately as possible. Um, and as thoroughly as possible was his recommendation. That's, you know, where you see sometimes slip ups made municipal law. Um, uh, as Stephanie has let us know, the open meeting law, remote slash hybrid meetings that, um, would end uh, next hoping from today, the 31st of March, looks like it's going to be extended. Both the State House and the State Senate have passed that extending it until the end of June of 2027.
Yeah.
The governor, as far as we know, hasn't signed it yet.
Yeah, I checked and she didn't.
Okay. The, the expectation is, she, we know she's supportive.
Yes.
Um, and hopefully she does it before long, so it doesn't impact meeting postings and things like that. Um, but that's good news for everybody. Um, and the expectation is some form of that is going to be unpermitted, but there's there's some dispute in the legislature. Some people, some people don't want any remote, fully remote meetings. They're going, okay, with hybrid, but not fully remote. Some people are on the other side and say everything has to be hybrid. Even, so you can't have just an in-person meeting that be covered on Zoom. And, yeah, you know, there are arguments all, all over the place on that. So we set a, a two year, three month extension.
What about town meeting?
So town meeting, open town meeting, there's really not a practical way of um, of doing that remote because there's not really a way to register people and be sure people are voting and things like that. Um, representative town meeting does have a remote option. That's part of the same COVID era law.
Okay.
Um, I attend, just on that topic, I, I went to an MMA webinar on town meetings. Maybe even a month and a half, two months ago. I don't remember if anyone else from here was on that. And there was a moderator, it was mostly run by moderators. And there was a moderator there that came up with a way of doing remote participation for open town meeting, no voting. But, but a way of allowing people that can't leave their house for whatever reason
Yeah.
to at least post questions and things like that. It was a complicated, very complicated process. But it seems to work for that town. So that's, you know, in theory, an option that the town could consider, but there is no way you run the law or really practically of doing voting um, remotely. That's, town meeting is mostly about voting. Um, and I will hold up this beautiful card of Northborough Power Choice and we have uh, two public information sessions coming up. One is, uh, March 27th at 6:00 PM at the library. The other is April 3rd at 1:00 PM at the senior center. Um, and I encourage anyone that has any questions or concerns about Northborough Power Choice to go to one or the other or both of those. Um, and of course, go to northboroughpowerchoice.com. That's Northborough with full spelling. Um, to, uh, to see a lot of frequently asked questions and details about the process and everything else. And of course, if anyone has any questions that are phone numbers, there are email addresses that you can call. Um, have you been getting a number of questions?
We have.
Good.
Yes.
That's great.
Say two to three a day.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of interest.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah.
Um,
And Andy's been wonderful answering them.
Great.
That's your project, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yes, that's your baby. Um, so thank you very much. Lisa, do you have any reports tonight?
I have a few reports. Um, I was also at the IFtar and, um, I had a wonderful meal. They were very educational in the way they spoke about, um, some of their programs. And, um, I also had uh, met a resident of the group that was very, um, very concerned about not being able to get his sidewalk done. He's been asking since 2018. And, uh, I think that one of my last things I should talk about again is sidewalks, because that's probably my middle name. And I'm hoping that we can do something about that for him, um, finding, finding a way to, to do that, to be able to, uh, connect that neighborhood to Proctor School. And I think, yeah, that's a long time to be asking. So I told him I would bring it forward and I'm doing that this evening. Um, there's a couple of just little things that I looked at that I don't know when else to talk about it, so I'm using reports. Um, I noticed on um, Stephanie's, um, town administrator update on March 13th, um, on page three or four, under Public Works, it says Fire Station Project. Mass DOT Drainage Issue. Investigating Possible Town Funding Requirements. Is there a, do you understand, do you know what that's about, Steph?
It was under fire?
Yeah, it says Fire Station Project.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, yeah. Um, because there is issues with the drainage that the DOT might put on the town cost wise where that wasn't anticipated before. We're working with DOT right now to try to figure that out on whether or not it would be incurred, if it would be our property problem, or if it would be on whether or not it would be incurred, if it would be our property problem, or if it would be the state's property. So, yeah, they're, they're researching that as we speak.
All right, 'cause I remember when, when we talked about it with them, we talked about the application and what they had to give them for the application. We was assured that there was, everything was fine, but.
Right, yeah.
See that, you know, that we're looking at it. And I think it's good even for the general public to understand, we still look at everything. Under Planning, on the same the same date, for the downtown streetscape project. It says Need Blake Street Property Owner's Confirmation for Participation. Did that mean that if they didn't, do we know what happened with that participation?
Yes, so, um, 10, 14, I, I, I'm not positive of the, of the numbers offhand, but it does matter when we're applying for grants. If we have businesses that will want to integrate with our grant process, we are awarded or proposed to be awarded more money. And right now, we have a cousin that is, you know, in basically answering for the owner, so at this point, I don't believe there's interest. There's interest from some other businesses in the area, so hopefully we can work with those people to to help us keep the funding that we were actually hoping to get. At this point, it's, it's still undetermined on whether or not we could reach out to the owner or or just start to focus on other surrounding businesses. But yeah, that, that definitely is an important point of the grant process.
All right, so, so I first read it as that you needed the confirmation for participation for that grant.
It is, yeah.
Is that what it means?
We did get confirmation that at this point, they weren't interested in doing anything.
Okay, and are the other businesses on the same street that are interested in helping with the?
Yeah, I know of one, which one is better than none.
Okay. And so going on the Lake Street again, there was, hold on. Okay, the article that we have, I think it's Article 32, starts out by talking about the, there's a drainage issue. That's one of the reasons why we're going for the grant and we're doing the street over. Is there a report, the Stormwater Deficiencies Engineering Report available? So that, that can be seen?
I just wanna see which one it is. Okay, so that, is that the lower lot retaining law and stair renovation?
It's under, well, let me just look at the description. No, there's no page numbers. It's close to the back, it says Article, that's 30, hold on. Yeah, Article 20, Article 29, Planning Department. It says, Request for Funds to Address Stormwater Deficiencies, Increase Public Parking Capacity and Enhance Pedestrian Access Safety and Overall Streetscape Aesthetics. So that's right now in the description of the, of the article. But I wanted to be able to see the, the stormwater deficiencies report, because it seems like there's only one little section that does have a water when it, when it rains heavily and stays for a little while, and that's over by the pocket park, but not down the street.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, let me look into that. So stormwater.
Lisa, these, I appreciate this is your last reports. These items are a little outside of typical providing reports to the board and the public and things you've done recently. If you, maybe you could email these questions to Stephanie. You know, if you wanted to, well, after the 31st, you won't have to worry about the open meeting law with us, you could just send us all the responses or, or anything else.
I just, I just wanna get some of these out so that they're there. And I know I was supposed to send her a question about the housing developments or Housing Authority, and I haven't been able to draft something yet for her to do that, so I didn't wanna just let some of that fly, 'cause I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be around for a while. So these are things that I've had a few people ask me about. So I'm almost done. So, um, then the last question I have is about on the March 4th, DPW Directory Report. There was two different things that I kinda questioned. There was a $5,000 lighted sign maintenance and repair. And I know that we're having new signs made. Do you know what that might be for?
$5,000 sign maintenance and repair. Is this part of the articles you're saying?
No, I think it's part of what his memorandum was.
Okay.
March 4th.
No, no, I gotta look back at that, I don't know.
Okay, and you can check it later. And the last thing was, it was $22,000 for materials, contracted services, additional labor to support the dog park. So, the dog park is an interesting amount of monies that are already set, and by the math, it looks like there's enough money there. I'm just kind of interested how we put the $22,000 for that, and we could probably use it on something a little bit more important.
Yeah, I know mulch is an issue for our future maintenance and because the dogs just kick it up after they do that thing.
Okay, I'll send you a copy, I'll send the board a copy of the estimate of how much money has gone into the dog park already, and that can go.
Yeah, that's one thing we do have to be very careful of when we take on a project, we have to look at future cost and, you know, maintenance costs year to year, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's kind of an important one. So, I'm going to end all that, my usual questions asking. And as everybody on the board is aware, and I think a few more people, because made the newspaper today, oh, well, okay, I can see the sort of thing, that I'm, I'm officially done with my work on March 31st. It's been a very interesting almost two years of, of being on the inside. And I wanna thank everybody and for, for, for being partners and putting up with my questions, and I wish you all a very good, good time. I'm sure things will be more interesting as time goes on. And I also meant to say that I did hear from the Ethics Commission today. So that letter that was sent out was a real letter, and we had a discussion and they're gonna be sending me their, their decision shortly. So that's another thing that won't be a problem, because I won't be on the board anymore. So I wanna thank you all and wish you a good, good next season.
And we'd like to thank you, I think.
Thank you, Lisa.
You made us think about a lot of issues in town. Thank you for all your research and time that you've spent and I know, hope you stay involved for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your commitment to the town, Lisa.
Thanks.
Great. Stephanie, reports tonight?
Yes, have a great time in Ireland, I'm jealous. Carol Greenwich, we hired her as our new director for the COA, or Senior Center. Senior, some towns for her, as Council on Aging. And she was the director in Carlisle, Massachusetts. She also has a background in, as a social worker, she was a social manager. We collaborated with the staff and they got to meet her on their second interview, we took our two candidates there, and it was great, they were very happy to be part of the process and and they're excited, she's excited, and April 1st is the date, that was a quick turnaround time. Yeah, we got very lucky because there are a slew of directors that are retiring soon, so we got really lucky that we had someone come up with experience. Yeah.
Look forward to meeting her.
Yes.
Oh, the trail.
The trail, I was gonna mention that in my reports, and I totally forgot. So on April 1st at 5:30?
4:30.
4:30 PM, 4:30 to 6:30, there's the official grand opening of the ADA Accessible Trail that's behind the Senior Center. It's already been constructed, people have already walked around it. But this is the, the formal opening, I think they were planning to be hot dogs and hamburgers or something like that.
I hope so. I'm starving right now, so I think.
But that's, but I'm super excited about that trail, because it's not just, not just for seniors, not just for people in wheelchairs. It's people, you know, parents pushing a stroller, you know, anything like that. It's a really nice trail.
Yeah.
I mean, you really, you think, oh, it's paved, yeah, it's paved, but you really feel like you're going into nature.
You hope it's a nice day out.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's good, I'm sorry, I interrupted your reports, do you have anything else?
No, there was the whole budget, so we're good.
Okay. Do you have any reports tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is, is there anything that we wanted to add to any future agenda items?
Just a question, sorry.
Sure.
Did we get a date for when, I've, I've had a few people reach out and ask when Apple Fest 2025 dates are, do we know what that is? And are those meetings happening and can we attend?
And.
I believe Apple Fest is September 18th, Thursday, the 18th to Sunday, the 21st. I am not 100% sure where I saw that, I think it was probably at a Rotary Club meeting, so that we know the dates to plan for the street fair, which would be Saturday, the 20th. That's all I, that's all I know about it.
Okay, and we never got to meet with them, correct?
Unfortunately, never did.
And they haven't responded yet?
Maybe we could reach out again? And somebody can let you know what that's all about.
Okay.
No reason to go into it now, but we've been trying to, to have a chat with the Apple Fest committee folks.
Thank you.
I mean, you know, real work is already taking place to plan for it. So, that would be good. Public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to offer any comment, comment on anything at this time? All right, I thought, I thought we were gonna have Scott.
We've got Susan. Now that you have a resignation from your board, I hope that you put on your next meeting where you will discuss and let us know with townspeople what the process is to fill our position.
Yeah, yeah, we need to figure that out, because.
Just skip future agenda.
Go ahead, I asked, I asked if there was anything.
I'm sorry, I'm zombed out.
Okay. Does anyone, well, yeah, so it's a, our, our charter says that, you know, we meet jointly with the moderator and the unfortunately, Lisa's resignation was about two weeks too late to get onto the ballot. So if we're going to fill it, it needs to be filled by a vote of remaining members of the board and the school committee chair and the moderator. That's how the charter lays that out. It says until the next regular election. Well, the next regular election is May. So do we, can we do it before then? Do we have to do it after then and so forth, but yeah.
So you will get an answer from Legal Council?
We're gonna have to get an answer as to, as to how best, best to do that, and yeah, we'll have to discuss that.
And everybody understands that there is a contested race, but it's for one position, the three position. Okay, thank you.
I'm very aware. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer anything under public comment, either in person or remote? Going once, going twice, public comment is closed. Any other business to come before the board?
Future agenda items, we discussed how we're gonna do economic development, if we're gonna have a committee or what we're gonna do.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, you know, right, probably right after town meeting
Yeah, yeah.
would be a, a good time to just, just do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, and, you know, I know ideally, you know, having a, you know, a staff member somehow paid for that, but if we can't do it, and I don't think we'll be able to do it right now, then a member of staff that can devote some time, no matter if it is critical. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other business to come before the board? Lisa, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Made by Lisa to adjourn, seconded by Julianne. All those in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Mike?
Hi.
I also vote aye, vote as unanimous in favor, we're adjourned 11:23 PM.
Thank you.
Bringing us a wonderful evening.